Good evening. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting on February 3rd, 2020, to order. I'm Counselor Paul McPherson, and I will be chairing the Planning and Economic Development Agenda Items for this evening's meeting, and we will have Counselor Tony Brune to chair the Community Services and Infrastructure Agenda Items. I'd like to begin by reading a safety notice. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors and obey all instructions given, and if assistance is required, please see one of our two clerks here. Once you have evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of Town Hall. Please note Town of Lincoln Committee and council meetings are posted on our YouTube channel. I'd like to thank the public for attending the meeting this evening, and I just want to remind everyone of our rules of engagement: to please be respectful while others are speaking, and to please refrain from clapping and any other type of disturbance that you may choose to use while we're in session here. Delegations will have five minutes to speak and are asked to stay focused on the agenda item. Please remember to silence all cellular devices. Roll call. This evening, we have regrets from Counselor Rajima. We have a number of staff in attendance along the back wall here and also in the front couple of rows right up to our bylaw manager of bylaw, Dan Smith, up in the far right corner, my right corner. And we thank staff for their support this evening. Are there any declarations of interest? Seeing none. Please note, we have a motion to amend the order of the agenda this evening. For the Planning and Economic Development Committee Agenda Item 6.5 Confidential Items will be considered first, making it 6.1 with registered delegations to follow, and then report PD 0420, report PD 0520, and finally, the consent agenda. Amending the order requires a majority vote. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried unanimously. We have two public hearings this evening. The purpose of the public hearings is to receive comments from the public and consider questions regarding the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment applications by 2708158 Ontario Inc. and the zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of condominium applications by FBF Ontario Inc. Please be advised, Section 1715, 3412, and 5110.4 of the Planning Act requires that before adopting an official planned amendment, or passing a zoning bylaw amendment, or granting draft approval of a plan of condominium, council must ensure that sufficient information and material is available to understand generally the proposal being considered, and council must hold at least one public hearing for the purpose of giving the public an opportunity to make representations regarding the proposed amendments. If a person or public body does not make oral submissions at a public meeting, or make written submissions to the Town of Lincoln before the applications are approved, the person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision of Town Council to the local planning appeal tribunal. Personal information is collected under the authority of the Planning Act and may be contained in an appendix to a staff report, published in the meeting agenda, delegation list, and/or the minutes of the public meeting, and made part of the public record. The Town of Lincoln collects this information in order to make informed decisions on the relevant issues and to notify interested parties of council's decisions. It may also be used to serve notice of a local planning appeal tribunal hearing. Names and addresses contained in submitted correspondence and other information will be available to the public unless the individual expressly requests the town to remove their personal information. The disclosure of this information is governed by the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, RSO 1990 CM56. We stress that at this point, no decision has been made on the application, and council will take any comments received into account in their consideration of these items. There is an attendance list by the door, which we would ask all present to sign if they wish to be notified of council's decision. Members of the public are reminded to give their name and address when they speak. If approved by council, a notice of the item's passing will be circulated with an appeal, period. Our first public hearing is for the purpose of the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment applications by 2708158 Ontario Inc. We have two delegations registered this evening with respect to this public hearing. Craig Rowe from Upper Canada Consultants will be speaking to PD 02-20 Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Applications by 2708158 Ontario Inc. Mr. Rowe, would you please come forward?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of committee. Craig Rowe, Upper Canada Consultants, we're the agent for the owners of the property, being Three Pillars Realty. With me tonight are members of that business, Mr. David Stokel and Neil O'Donnell, who are sitting in the second row here. My duty tonight is going to be to provide a bit of an overview of what the applications entail. Happy to answer any questions when I'm done, as well as they would like to make themselves available if you have any specific questions about their business and would like to know more details. So in terms of the physical context of the subject lands, they're located at the northeast corner of Homestead Drive and Ontario Street in Beamsville. They're generally situated on the fringe of existing residential neighborhood and across the road from a commercial plaza. They're just down the road as well from the site of the new Beamsville go station. Here's just some contextual photographs. So like I mentioned, it's a single detached dwelling. There's the view from the corner of Homestead and Ontario Street. That is along Homestead Drive. And then this is the view from the deck at the rear of the property, facing Homestead Drive, and then facing the other property line as well. So in terms of the applications, the property is designated residential in the Town of Lincoln Official Plan and R1 Residential in the Town's zoning bylaw. The owner has submitted applications for a site-specific official plan and zoning bylaw amendment that would allow for three specific commercial uses to be permitted and operate within the full extent of the existing dwelling. The proposed uses include a real estate brokerage, a lawyer's office, or an insurance brokerage. Due to the size constraints within the dwelling, only one of these uses could operate at a time. These uses are considered to be low-intensity office uses. Residential permissions have been requested to remain, and that will allow, at some point in the future, if the owner wanted to transition the dwelling back to residential tenure, they could do that. So keeping a residential designation and zoning, site-specific permissions to allow three unique commercial uses within the full dwelling. To be clear, no expansions or alterations of the building are proposed. A small five-space parking lot will be required on-site for the commercial uses. This parking lot will be constructed in the rear yard and access from Homestead Drive, and the existing driveway will be retained and used as an accessible parking space. The justification for this application has been outlined in the submitted plan justification report, and specifically, the subject lands are located within the Ontario Street Intensification Corridor and are also subject to Section A of the official plan, which has additional urban design policy that reflects uses that are along this corridor. Combine these policy subsets as promote Ontario Street Corridor and adjacent properties as priority locations for a mix of uses, higher densities, and good urban design. The existing interface of the property with Ontario Street and being on the edge of the neighborhood lends itself to being an appropriate location for select low-intensity commercial uses. So this is a demonstration plan of the property. As proposed, and as I noted, there are no expansions proposed to the dwelling at all. I think there's a mouse appears. Is there not? It's the, oh, okay, good. I can't really see where it's moving there. So this would be the parking lot in the rear yard, as well as what we're proposing is a very robust landscape plan. So we've had this plan prepared by an Ontario landscape architect. It's the full intent of the owners to implement that plan paired with the necessary requirements for the parking lot on-site. So really, the core elements here are about meeting the objectives of the official plans in terms of making better design, contributing to the aesthetics of the Ontario Street Corridor, but also using a natural interface to service and buffering for any concerns about noise or light trespass on adjacent residential properties. So as a recap to the rationale, the structure of the amendments requires the residential dwelling to remain and allows for a transition back to residential. The proposed uses are low intensity with limited amounts of employees. This also contributes to the public realm through good landscape design. Ontario Street is an intensification corridor that promotes a mix of land uses, including commercial, and it is believed that surely when the new zoning bylaw comes forward, it will be working to implement some of those policy directions that come from the official plan. So we're not really coming out of left field with a request for commercial in this area. Additional screening, lastly, is being employed to limit any perceived negative impacts that may be generated on-site by the parking.
Mr. Rowe, just so you know where you're at, you're about four and a half minutes now.
Okay. So we had an open house on January 28th. These are a list of the comments here, as I'm sure many of the residents will speak to, and I'm happy to speak to any of them that you may have. But in terms of next steps, we'll be addressing any of council's comments tonight, as well as if any additional agency comments. And then if approved, this is for an official plan zoning amendment, no site plan is required, and then we would just be going forward with construction.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rowe. Could you explain to me what the use of this building has been up to now?
Certainly. Through the chair to you, Mayor Easton. The use of the property has been a single detached dwelling. It's been a residential dwelling that folks have lived in. It's recently had some interior renovations to clean it up.
Okay. Has there been any illegal operation going on in this house prior to this application?
No. Through you, Mr. Chair, no, there's been no illegal operation. The business is not being run currently. It's just owned by Three Pillars Realty. The owners of the property sometimes go into the dwelling and sit at a table in there and do a little bit of their work, but it's certainly not receiving customers' payments or anything of that nature.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Mikulak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the presenter. Is there plans to do renovation to the exterior of the building as well?
Through, Mr. Chair. Recently, the building was re-clad. Some of the exterior renovations are not really structural in nature. We're bringing in an accessible ramp to ensure that people can access, have full accessibility to the front of the building. We're also going to be integrating some sidewalk from the parking lot and then a really robust landscaping plan. But structurally, there's no plans for any expansions of that dwelling, and frankly, just with having to put in the parking lot, there's just not a logical room to expand that, and we'd also be out of conformity with the zoning bylaw.
Just if I may, one more question with regards to, is there going to be signage? What sort of signage? My guess is that if it's to be operated in a commercial manner, there'd be some signage. Is there a plan for what sort of signage you're planning?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The signage for this is going to be generally respectful of the area. We're not talking a large-scale sign. As part of the landscaping, there's an existing tree stump that's actually around in the front area. What they're planning to do is a small gardenette. It would just be a low pylon sign, nothing clad to the front of the building or anything, just be a low, small illuminated pylon sign that's out in front of the property.
All right. That's good for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair McPherson. Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Question, when did the applicants purchase this property?
Through, Mr. Chair, and my clients can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was purchased earlier in 2019, I think in the spring or summer, correct?
August 30th.
August 30th.
Okay. And since that time, because it was a rather dilapidated residence, it's undergone quite a transformation. Just wondering why we didn't receive this presentation at that time? So why the renovations took place, and now we see it?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The renovations were actually completed by the previous homeowner to add some value and clean it up before it was sold to our clients.
Okay.
Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Rowe. Couple questions. The first would be, based on the comments and the concerns from residents, was there anything that you guys were able to ascertain, or any possible solutions to some of their feedback that you got out of that open house?
So through you, Mr. Chair. What we heard at the meeting was generally concern from the neighbors about integrating a use into the neighborhood that's not residential in nature. We provided an overview of why we felt it was an appropriate site for it, namely due to the interface being on Ontario Street and falling within those special policy areas. Certainly, as a planner, I would not be supporting a use like this being established in the middle of a stable neighborhood, but due to the interface with Ontario Street and the way that it's designated, and that we felt that we could develop this in a manner, and this really integral about the way that the amendment was done, is it's the existing dwelling. This is not a new commercial building going up. If they do anything that's outside of that, then they would need further planning approvals. We really felt that maintaining the dwelling, maintaining the character, and that was a primary concern. But some of the other issues at hand, I think it's just people that are concerned about, you know, their perception of their neighborhood and how this may lead to future transitions.
Okay. Follow-up, Mr. Chair. So with that in mind, again, there are still some available openings in some of the commercial spaces in Ontario. Why wouldn't you select one of those as a, not you, but the owners, select one of those as opposed to going and trying to rezone an existing residential?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Our clients were looking at some of the buildings down on King Street, and certainly, if you'd like, they could speak a little bit more to that. But Ontario Street being the key arterial that it is, it sees a lot of traffic. It's a great opportunity for exposure, and it's in a good spot from their perspective. Also, the low intensity of their use, typically their agents are on the road, so paying for a large commercial structure that generally sits empty most of the time, not necessarily desirable from a price point. This was, they were satisfied with this structure and felt that it could meet their needs, so that's why they opted for it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Brune.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Mr. Rowe, similarly to Counselor Russell's comments, I had the opportunity to come to the public meeting and listen to some of the neighbors' concerns. You know, you mentioned in your presentation that the use of this building currently is for real estate law office and insurance broker. You know, I think we heard, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we heard from some of the residents that were at the public meeting, that based on what Mr. O'Donnell had said during the public meeting, that, you know, he has a number of brokers, but a lot of them work from their home office, don't come into the office, that, you know, basically from 6:00 at night till 6:00 in the morning, the parking lot would be empty. He offered to some of those residents the use of the parking lot, and that's all great, but there were concerns that were heard at the public meeting that, you know, there's no guarantees, and a year from now, the Realty Office closes up and a law office opens up there or something else. Wonder if you could comment on that, if you've had a discussion with your client?
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair. We've carefully selected the three uses due to their similar intensity. Certainly, if approved, there is the potential that the Realty Office may close, and you may have a law office that goes in there. What I heard, as you may have heard as well, were some concerns about things like a convenience store popping up, or a breadth of other commercial uses that aren't contemplated through the amendment. So I think that what I would offer to the committee is that the three uses that we've proposed, we've designed the parking accordingly to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaw for those types of uses. I think that there, you know, the types of uses that are contemplated are similar to sometimes what you see in a home occupation that may be in the middle of a neighborhood as well, and effectively based on the floor area in this, the basement isn't really conducive to any business, so it would be half the house is being used for commercial purposes. I think that the three uses themselves would probably, would be compatible with the neighborhood. I think that the concerns about additional uses popping up, they would be subject to a Planning Act approval, and then at the discretion of council to grant anything like that, but Three Pillars is planning on using it as their primary office in Beamsville, their headquarters.
Okay. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. If I could ask one more question. So Mr. Rowe, again, in his presentation, made the comment, and I believe I accurately depicted it, it said, "We're not coming out of left field on this." So I guess as a counselor that's, you know, now coming into my fifth year, to me, this is about a little bit out of left field, and I'm wondering through you, Mr. Chair, if someone from our planning could comment, just for counselor understanding. So when I look at, when I look up and down Ontario Street from the gateway to King Street, yes, we have a number of businesses that are operating out of single-family homes, and most of those are above May Street, which I've always been told is basically the central business district. When I look at the rest of Ontario Street, you know, there are businesses, but they're in plazas. So I'm wondering through you, Mr. Chair, if the planning department could just comment on that in terms of, you know, how we perceive Ontario Street, certainly aware and cognizant that in 2019, we extended the BIA to come down there. So I'm just wondering if staff could maybe comment along those lines.
Mr. Bruder.
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, that's correct. So, you know, to your point, Counselor, there are a few businesses all along Ontario, some being up near the central business district, some being closer to where these subject lands are, that are operating out of houses. I wouldn't say that's necessarily the vision that we had in mind, but Ontario Street is identified as an intensification corridor in our official plan, and what that means is we envision it being, you know, more of a mix of uses, those being commercial, obviously doesn't preclude residential, but it opens it up for a little bit more flexibility, given that, you know, we've got our go transit station that's proposed at Ontario and Green Lane at the one end, and then our central business district at the other. I would tell you as well, especially in our central business districts, that we would be looking for uses, as the presenter said, actually, that would be a little more efficient use of the land. We do have things like a little bit higher height allowances in those areas, but along Ontario Street as well, just due to the makeup of the road, it being a main corridor in and out of Beamsville, it's kind of a focal point for commercial development, at least that's what we see going forward on kind of a longer-term planning basis.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Timmers.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Through you to Mr. Rowe. Regarding the entrance, I know some of the people in public have commented that they would like to see the entrance on Ontario Street where it currently is now, and looking at the diagram up there, is it possible to extend the entrance to the back? Is there room there between the house and the edge of the road? I don't know. Maybe I need to put that through to Planning or Public Works for comment as well, but...
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair, I can answer that. As it stands from a space requirement, I don't believe we could fit a drive-through there. I think certainly the existing location of the driveway is existing. It's advantageous to be that accessible parking spot for us, but envisioning multiple vehicles exiting right out of a corner is not preferable from a safety perspective. By placing the entrance a ways back, we maintain visibility, we have better opportunities to screen, and it creates for a little bit better layout of the site. I think that there'd be concerns, especially vehicles were coming out and making a left-hand turn out of the driveway, but you had someone making a right-hand turn off of Homestead, it creates a dangerous interface. So from a planning and engineering perspective, we have the room in the back, we can drain it properly, we can screen it properly, and it provides enough separation from the intersection there to allow good visibility and serve the needs of the building.
Just looking at the report, though, you know, you've made reference that there would be like one vehicle there pretty much on a regular basis, so, and with a meeting once a week with all of staff, so it's not like there's going to be a large amount of cars going in and out of that driveway.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The accessible space is being provided on the driveway. I can't speak to if they would have an employee that would require the use of that space full-time. Certainly, from a universal accessibility perspective, it's important that it be put in, and that's why we've added it. Having it close to the building entrance is also important. In order to meet our parking requirements, if this becomes a drive-through aisle, we'd effectively lose the space, and we'd be out of conformity with the zoning bylaw as well.
Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering if either Planning or Public Works could comment on the possibility of the entrance off of Ontario Street?
Mr. Bruder.
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Chair. So points raised by the presenter, they sound valid, in my opinion, and also, this is, Ontario Street there is a regional road as well, so some of the responsibility for reviewing the entrance there, if it were to go through there, would be their responsibility as well. But it is quite close to the corner, and I would agree with a lot of the observations in terms of having a lot of vehicles turning in and out in that location.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bruder, and I just have one more question.
Sure.
Regarding the on-street parking, I believe there are two spots that will be lost. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it appears that two spots would be lost.
And again, if I could just turn it over to either Planning or Public Works, is there another location that those two spots could be accommodated within Homestead?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So that's certainly something I'm discussing too with our Public Works folks. That is something that we would definitely like to see addressed, because, yeah, it is acknowledged that there would be a loss of a couple spaces there, which, you know, we wouldn't necessarily like to see, so we're going to continue some dialogue on potential solutions for that, including maybe other areas where we can open up some availability. But I don't have an answer for you just yet.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Reimer.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Thank you, Mr. Rowe, for your presentation. One question through, probably to Planning. Can you give a little bit of background just regarding, Mr. Rowe had mentioned that the change of the use, again, back to residential, didn't require our approval? Is this, and also on a resale, is this bylaw amendment, is it on title, or is it standalone? Or maybe just some background to that, please?
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the way it's being proposed to structure this zoning bylaw amendment is, rather than changing the zoning on the property to general commercial, which opens it up to a multitude of commercial uses and not necessarily residential so much, what they're doing now is they're just maintaining the residential zone, but adding a special provision to allow these three businesses that they're recommending. So what that would do is that would maintain the viability of that residential use, so if one of these three uses was no longer there, they wanted to convert back to residential, well, that would be permitted as of right, because the zoning on the property would still allow for the residential use.
Okay. And if it changed owners?
The zoning would remain the same as is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Mikulak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. One of the concerns I've noted is lighting. Is there any proposals? I didn't see anything on the drawing with regards to a high-boy light, or is there any lighting of the parking lot planned, or now or in the future?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It's something we're looking at to see if a light is actually deemed as necessary for this. If that were the case, it would likely be a wall pack light. It wouldn't be a typical tall light standard with downcast lighting. We've seen with some of the wall pack lighting, you can put vertical cutoffs and things like that to make sure that you don't have that light trespass, and it's certainly something that we're capable of working with Town Planning to ensure that that's not a concern. But right now, it's not envisioned to have a proper light standard sitting in the parking lot in any form.
And if I, one more question, if I may.
Sure.
Just, so my understanding is that we're maintaining the residential piece as far as zoning, and I'm not sure if you're the one that may be able to answer this question. Staff might have a better understanding, but what's the, with regards to the impact assessment, with regard to assessment, when a property is owned commercial, there's a greater amount of tax revenue that a municipality receives. If it maintains its residential piece, are we effectively having a commercial use with a residential tax base? I'm not sure if finance or who could answer that question.
Kathleen, Ms. Dale, if you would help us there, please.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Chairman. So when it comes to assessment, it's quite possible that the value of the property probably won't change when you can convert it to an office use, but there are different tax rates that are applied if it's used for residential purposes versus if it's used for commercial purposes. So NPAC does get a copy of all of, whenever there's a change of zoning... So NPAC does get a copy of all of, whenever there's a change of zoning, they do get copies of that as well. When you convert something to an office use, you may require a building permit for a change of use. So NPAC, when there is a change in zoning or a change in use through a building permit process, they will evaluate the assessment, and they will review whether there's going to be a change in tax class. So I suspect that regardless of what the zoning is, NPAC traditionally applies their assessment based on the use of the property. So it's going to be based on what the use of the property is. So I suspect their taxes will go up slightly.
Okay, thank you very much. So, Mr. Rowe, I just have a couple of questions. In the report, and they're basically around the activity that the neighbourhood should So in the report, it talks about the existing detached dwelling will be renovated into two offices. The ground floor is expected to be renovated into an office for an existing real estate brokerage, while the basement will be renovated into a separate office. Can you speak to that?
Good question, Mr. Chair. In discussions with our client and actually going in the dwelling, the basement ceiling is only about six foot high, it's not conducive, the basement's also not universally accessible, so our clients have consented that it would only be the main floor being used as an office, one use at a time.
Okay. So there's no other business going to operate out of the basement?
No, sir.
And in the report, it also speaks to the real estate brokerage has nine agents and one administrative employee, so that's today. So in any good business, we're expecting it to grow. You speak to, you know, weekly meeting, you know, where all agents will be on-site, and that's expected. So what can the residents expect to see on average? You know, on any given day, you know, we're told that the agents are out, you know, selling homes, but what should the activity, what should the residents expect to see as far as vehicles are concerned and the, you know, in and out during any business day?
Certainly. With your permission, if you wouldn't mind, I'll defer that to Mr. O'Donnell.
Hi, good evening. So with three pillars, we have one admin who will be there during the day, all of our agents are out with clients. We don't expect them to be in the office, matter of fact, we don't want them in the office, we don't rent them desks, we don't give them desk space. There's only two bedrooms, they're not for the agents. At any given day, you're going to have one car there who is going to be our administrator, and then at any given day, you may have a car every now and then who comes in to pick up a sign and head back out. That's what we're having there. And when we're talking about growth, yes, of course, any business wants to grow, but again, the way we run our business is the agents are out in the community. If they're in the office, they're not helping clients, right? And when we started with this, we started looking in Grimsby and some other areas, but I live here, my kids are here, they go to school here, right? And Beamsville doesn't have one. Smithville has two real estate agents, offices. Grimsby has over half a dozen, maybe almost eight of them. They're all everywhere. But why not Beamsville? What's wrong with Lincoln? So I live here, our agents live here, so that's why I want to put the office here.
Okay, so, so good to know that there's not, I think that's an important piece, there's not desks set up for each agent to come in and do their work. This is, maybe this is more, they are working remotely, they are working from their home or whatever, so that those that are in administration are those that we would expect would be there in the office.
Correct. And right now, one administrator in the model that we're running should be able to handle up to thirty to forty agents before we have to add another administrative staff.
And as you grow, those thirty to forty would be operating the same way. They would be out and about and coming in from time to time for, pick up a form, pick up a sign, whatever it is.
Yeah, we wouldn't have to pick up a form, everything is digital nowadays. It's literally picking up a sign, and that's about it.
Very good. I have Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Donnell, this question is for you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to be assured that, of what your intentions are with the basement. And so my question to you is, what are the opportunities for this basement to become a basement apartment? Sorry?
Zero.
Zero, okay. You live here, Mr. O'Donnell, so I'm sure you know what we're confronted with in terms of the activity on Ontario Street.
Absolutely.
And so the public concerns about a very, very, what appears to be a very minor zoning bylaw is in direct relationship to the activity on that street and our inability to, we have engaged on a number of occasions, and there are advocates on all the streets, on both sides of the road, we have engaged with the region on many occasions. So what you're hearing tonight is an escalation of concern, because any increase in traffic, any increase in internal traffic to get to a stoplight, and that's another element of this, has to be taken into account. It isn't just a matter of a planning application and whether it fits or it doesn't. Obviously, it fits three levels of provincial policy and local and regional policy. But the, you know, the question that the public are asking around turnaround points, and all of their questions, they are all extremely legitimate, and I hope that you will take that into account as the discussion continues.
Oh, absolutely. Matter of fact, when we were here during the open house, some of our neighbours have, you know, voiced concerns about parking, and since we are a Monday to Friday, nine to five, in the evenings and weekends, over holidays, we're not there, the parking lot's empty. And as Craig mentioned, and I've offered it numerous times, I said, if you're having family over for a gathering, or it's Christmas, we're not there, feel free, use the parking lot, right? I grew up in a small town, I've always been in a small town, and neighbours look after each other. So I have no issue now or in future, if we're not there, again, evenings and weekends, please feel free, it's sitting there. It'll be doing nothing, make use of it. So if, you know, we are going to lose one and a half or two spots, well, here's five more. And in the evenings and weekends, when they're home from work and we're not there, take advantage of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment to, again, Mr. O'Donnell's comment there. Again, I'm glad to hear that, again, you're very open and willing to offer that space up. To me, it goes to that future use, and what happens if, once the approval goes through, that offer may be rescinded, or the next group that comes in, if it's an insurance company or another realtor, they may not offer that. So again, then we're down two spots. But a question I have, I think, to our planning department slash bylaw, I know Dan's up in the stands there, what would happen if, again, the next potential owners would start changing the lighting where it would impact the residents nearby? Like what kind of clause do we have to make sure that that doesn't happen down the road or that we can rescind any of that? Because again, I know the plan sounds like it's going to be very neutral to the surrounding residents, but what happens if down the road, they make some changes under a new ownership group? Can we potentially impact that, negate it?
Do we have a taker for that question over at the staff row? Mr. Bruder?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So as a component of this, as the presenter explained, because there's no major exterior renovations or anything of the like on the building, you know, there wouldn't necessarily be the site plan process. However, we are requesting more than we normally would with respect to a building permit application to address things like grading and drainage because of the incorporation of a parking lot, a landscape plan as well, which will have, you know, we're going to be asking for certain details, such as that, you know, that will be considered as well. So then, as we move forward, you know, that plan will be on file for this particular property. So that is something that we could look to enforce if we had to.
So just to clarify, so they would have to adhere to that site plan approval?
If we had complaints received, we would look to that, and we would be indicating that this is what the approval was for, this was tied to it, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Oh, don't go away. We have one more question. Councillor Brene?
So councillor, I wasn't, councillor McPherson, I wasn't going to ask this question, but I can't, I can't help myself. So, you know, Mr. O'Donnell, you basically, you know, made a number of comments to the people that were at the PIC, and I respect that, you know, you're in the community and you want to have a business in the community. I just, I just find it really difficult to comprehend in the fact that Mr. Rowe indicated that you purchased this in the spring of 2019. Okay, so in August of 2019. So here we are now, and this application is just coming before council, we've just had a public meeting, and yet if I were to go on your website, could I ask you to let us know where you're showing as your business address?
Website, we don't have an address on our website. We have, you can find it, because we have to put it, we have to put an address where our mail goes.
And what address is that?
Forty-five, forty-nine Ontario. But just like I told everybody at the public meeting, we don't even have a phone line in that building yet, not a phone line. So if you go to any real estate office, right, you can't actively run a business. I don't have a whiteboard on a wall, I don't have a bulletin board, I don't have a computer, I don't have a power bar set up there, I don't even have one of those. I don't have a phone line in that building, all because we're going through this process, and I want to respect that process. So all of the business that we're operating, we're doing it from our own homes, out of our cars, waiting for this, but we have to give an address to have mail delivered, so we've had, we have the mailbox there, which isn't even at the house, it's across the street by the post office.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our next registered delegation, and I apologize if I get your last name incorrect, is Willie Seibert, speaking to PD 02-20, Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Applications by Mr. Seibert, please come forward. I got that correct?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Good evening. I guess I want to just say one thing, what I just heard, just maybe five minutes ago, the term was, "I live in Beamsville, why not Beamsville?" Okay, that's a fair statement. Does that person want a real estate agent beside their house? Yes or no? I know what the answer is, it's no. You don't want a business beside your own house. Think about it for a second. Okay, my name is Willie Seibert. I live on forty-nine, forty-six Homestead Drive. I've lived in this house for twenty-three years, and also a resident of the town of Lincoln for fifty years. When I received the letter from the town that proposed the amendment plan zoning bylaw, I looked at the location plan and I thought, two problems. One, a business, two, a parking lot in the backyard. The traffic congestion right now, because I know I lived there for twenty-three years, it's getting worse. Every day it gets worse. Adding a business right on the corner will make it even worse. Putting a business operation in the middle of a residential area, why? I asked this question to Josh Workington. Josh replied, "No legislation permits to refuse or reject planning applications. Town staff writes reports, recommendations whether to approve, approve with conditions or rejects." You know, I'm wondering now, has the town ever rejected this type of proposal? Probably not. This was touched on before, too. If properties are converted to businesses, more tax dollars to the town. You figure, more money, more money that I'm paying for, so it's better for the town, of course. On January sixteenth, 2020, forty-five, forty-nine Ontario Street, the property in question, I'm presuming they're already running, because I Googled it, and there what the address was, and there was the picture of the house. If you call the number, you hit the answering machine, it says the address forty-five, forty-nine Ontario Street. The business cards already have that address on it already. I thought they would have to wait for the proposal to be approved. This is just stating the town of Lincoln will pass the proposal through. Today's meeting, for me, it's a formality for people, I'm just speaking, voice my concerns. As always, these concerns seem to fall on deaf ears. We noticed Three Pillar Realty website that day, but probably it's been going on for a lot longer, not sure, but I think it was. This issue was brought up to the mayor, Sandra Easton. She replied immediately, asking to call her back. Called her back, left a message, nobody replied back. On January the thirtieth, Mike Herpocles stated, "The house has been operating a business without planning approvals that allows them to, that allows them to." If this is true, why change anything? Just leave it, leave the house the way it is. Why make all these big renovations? Why spend all that kind of money? Not sure. Two, the parking lot. The parking lot on the back house, looking at the location plan that was proposed in the public notice, I have a concern for this. I have been dealing with engineering drawings for the last thirty years, and I know what looks good on paper doesn't always look good in reality. Having a new entrance off of Homestead and so close to Ontario Street is a safety concern. This will just be congestion of cars and accident waiting to happen. The office will be running till, whatever, five o'clock, Monday to Friday, adds a lot of volume. Traffic in that area is crazy. From Homestead, trying to get onto Ontario Street is a challenge, there's a lot of traffic. In every business, the number one concern is health and safety. Now, the town of Lincoln is a business, so they should be making health and safety their number one concern. When I talk about this, it's a safety concern, which you can overlook. Also, it was brought to my attention, the previous homeowner asked the town if they could replace the carport with a garage, and also a driveway off of Homestead. Both requests were denied by a homeowner. So if that homeowner was denied, why would you let a businessman ask for both things? Just leave it the way it is.
Mr. Seibert, just a fourth, you're at thirty seconds.
In conclusion.
In conclusion, thank you.
I see this as a quick way of a personal gain in upsetting sixteen to twenty residential homeowners. I understand the town is growing, change is always happening, but I'm disappointed with how the town has handled this new development. Thanks.
Could just sit tight there for a minute, please? Any questions from council? Councillor Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Seibert. Actually, through you to Planning. I wonder if anybody could elaborate on the request that the previous resident tried to put a driveway off of Homestead, and what the, if that was true, what the situation was? Or do you have a chronological history on when that happened?
I don't know, just talking with the gentleman, I'm not sure exactly when he put that request in.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that's not something that I'm familiar with on that backstory, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay, again, I would just be curious to see what that, the reasoning behind, if there was a denial there, reasoning why at the time, and see if it still applies, so. Thank you.
So a question, a question on, again, the activity in the area. Mr. Bruder, the parking spaces that are on Homestead now, are they all gone from the driveway, potentially gone from the driveway west to the stop sign?
That's my understanding, Mr. Chair.
So there'll be no parking between the proposed driveway and the stop sign?
I don't believe so, I don't think there would, it would be the proper configuration.
Let me say, it would be a violation to park there.
Yes.
Okay. Just to try to get a visual of what would be still there, because I think if there was parking spaces still available, it quite easily could create a pretty busy corner, very busy. Councillor Mikulak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the delegate.
Just curious, where exactly do you live in proportion or in relation to this project?
Right across the road, one house, one house into Homestead.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure if you lived right next door.
No, across the road, one, directly across the road, and then one going into Homestead.
Okay, so I was just going to ask you a question. Is there any concern, so should this plan not move forward? And the developer, the owner, would most likely want to purpose this unit for something, and let's say there was a bad tenant with a barking dog all night, is there any concern as to who may be in that house?
I've seen a couple.
Should it go to market?
I've seen a couple homeowners in there. The previous one to this was great, he was excellent. Prior to that one, not that good, we all, everybody seemed to put up with it, but still, my point is, it was still a house.
Okay.
It wasn't, it's still a house, so to me, that's, that's nothing, that doesn't mean.
If I may, it's just, my thoughts are, the use that's being proposed appears to be, to me, a relatively silent, a relatively passive sort of nature, and I just, you know, I just was making sure that, you know, all the facts are there. Oh, sorry. Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seibert, appreciate it. Appreciate it. At this time, are there any other persons present this evening to address the Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Applications by two-seven-zero-eight-one-five-eight, Ontario Inc.? Please come forward, state your name and address, and spell your name for the record, please.
Yes, hi, my name is Tim Lilliman, spelled L-I-L-L-I-M-A-N. I live at four-five-five-three Ontario Street, directly next door. My major concern is, I appreciate that the town of Lincoln is growing fast. I think all of us can agree to that. The proposed property, I think one of the other concerns is, is what the value to the properties directly adjacent will undergo. Obviously, you can appreciate as the owner of the property. That's one of my biggest ones. The other one is the privacy issues. The proposal is to put parking lot right next to my property, which I have a chain link fence. And that is going to completely take away from the privacy of my household, not to mention the additional traffic. Now, many, many times, it has been mentioned that the office will operate on Monday to Friday from nine to five. I know many, many real estate agents, they don't operate just nine to five. Many, many times, it's weekend work. A lot of people who are looking for houses, they work hard during the day, and weekends is a busy, busy time for a Realtor. So as far as the house being quiet during the weekends, I, I find that really hard to believe, that it will be a quiet office development. And should it move forward, what kind of, I guess, considerations will be given to the properties that are directly next to the proposed site? You know, what kind of privacy will be put up to help compensate for that? Now, when I'm talking about noise, there was mention of a lighting structure, that type of thing. Dependent on that, that light could directly be going into my backyard. And one of my other neighbors is on the other side of the property, the back of the property, I guess, as it were. Really what it comes down to, my biggest concern is the value and the privacy.
Okay. Mr. Lilliman, just if you would, please, any comments with regards to the privacy piece? I know in the report, there was, spoke about leaving the chain link fence as it is, leaving that piece as it is. Is there, is there any consideration for more than that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so that's correct first about, yeah, the, what's already existing there. I don't think there's any plans to touch that. But also, one of the things that I mentioned before is, although we typically don't require it for a building permit, we were going to require them to submit a landscaping plan. And that includes details, you know, that we want to see with respect to shielding adjacent properties from any potential glare or anything like that. And also having a look at the lighting that's going to be going on the site as well. So we want to make sure that we have those controls in place. So that's something we would definitely be reviewing. But definitely, good points for sure. We'll make sure we consider those.
So we'll, we'll put those in as part of the open public meeting? Thank you. Any other questions? Ms., Counselor Mikulak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to either the delegate or his staff. There, I, I, like, looking on a Google Street View, I'm, I'm not gone to the residents in question personally, but I'm looking at, there's an existing, looks like a cedar, cedar, or some sort of hedge? Hedge or some sort of natural fence that's there currently, rather than just a chain link fence. Is there a possibility to put a wooden fence, like a more of a private fence? Or would that require the removal of the natural greenery?
It would require moving those trees. Those trees are probably thirty years old. They were on the property when I purchased the property. But yes, you know, in order to put up a wood fence, where the property line is, they would be definitely affected. And there would be great possibility that they would have to be removed to put up a wooden fence.
Okay, so if I may, those, that natural barrier, that, that it's working right now? Is it?
Well, it got much better. The previous owner, he was a very nice gentleman. He did a lot of work, and I'm sure a lot of the people in the neighborhood will appreciate that he took really what was an eyesore and made it a very attractive household. And then, of course, put the wooden fence up. That increased the privacy right off of the street, right adjacent to us. By removing that fence and putting in a parking lot, the privacy has now been completely depleted at that point.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pachariva?
Yeah, thanks, Chair McPherson. Through you, probably to Mr. Kerkopolis, because we've heard from a couple of the delegates this evening about, you know, operation, that, that, you know, it's a fait accompli. But tonight is a, is a public meeting, which is usually the first step in the process. And on a number of occasions, Counselor Brene and myself, over the years, it's, it's a public meeting as such, where nothing's been decided. It's, it's an open process. We value the residents' opinion and take on it, because you people live there. And Mr. Seibert, you know, had a very succinct observation, you know, put yourself in, in the residents' shoes and say, "Would you want this next to yourself?" So just to Mr. Kerkopolis, if he could shed some light on the process, where we are, how this plays out, and that nothing, and I repeat, nothing's been decided. In spite of business cards being done and websites being done, you can't put the cart before the horse.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To answer specifically the counselor's question and Mr. Seibert's question, we are at that stage in the process of a public meeting. We are facilitating that feedback, and a recommendation report has yet to be written. So staff haven't taken the position at this particular point in time, whether we are in support of it or we're not in support of it. And so these comments, the emails that we've received, the feedback that we've gotten, both in written form and through telephone messages, all find their way into our report and in the position we take moving forward. So there is no decision that has been made from a staff perspective, Counselor.
Very good. Mayor Easton, you are up.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much to the, to the presenter and also to Mr. Seibert. Mr. Chairman, I'm, in looking at the list, there is really an overabundance of concern here about safety. And my question really is to the C O, to establish, now that we've heard all the public comments, how would we incorporate some of those factors into a document that is essentially one of interpreting the provincial, regional, and local planning policies?
Mr. Kerkopolis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor's question. I, I think what we come back with will definitely incorporate those various elements. I think we need to have some further conversations with the region as it pertains to some of the traffic issues we've heard. I know some of the issues that have been raised specifically around traffic and traffic lights in that particular area. And so I think when we look at provincial policy, when we look at the number of other issues that have been raised today, those are items that we will ensure are reported back on and incorporated into any position or any report that staff do take. I think as Mr. Bruder highlighted, while this is an intensification corridor, when we look at Ontario Street in its totality, we need to incorporate a lot of the concerns we've heard from residents when we report back.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. C O. Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, we have to concede that we have not been successful at getting, we have the attention of the region. We have not been successful getting the two most important items here, which is an additional stoplight on, on Ontario Street, as well as the lane adjustments at the corner of, of Green Lane. So, and this is in spite of considerable advocacy and input from two of your neighbors, one on each side of Ontario Street. Mr. Leva is here tonight, and, and I want to thank him very much for his advocacy. But warrants are a major part of how the region decides whether a light should go in or not. It really means nothing to us when public safety is a major issue. However, we continue, and Regional Counselor Rob Foster and I have another meeting set up. We aren't feeling tremendously hopeful, and I'm hoping that this application and the intervention of the staff even further will help move this along. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I am calling for a second time for anyone to approach council and speak to the public meeting item. Please state your name and address and spell your surname for the record.
My name is Kelly Vidal, last name V-I-D-A-L. I live at four-five-six-nine Woodbridge Crescent, which is the first crescent off of Homestead. I just want to bring to council's attention that there are actually five bus stops twice a day that are in very close proximity of where the parking lot is planned. And I'm just curious to know what the plans are going to be for the safety of the children that live in and amongst the area.
Is there any, is there a response by Mr. Bruder? Is that, does, has that been part of the discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, that's something that is definitely being considered. That's something, as we move forward for a recommendation, that's going to need to be absolutely taken into account. I know we haven't received any input from the school board per se at this point yet, but also a good point that needs to be considered, for sure.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling for a third and final time to anyone to come forward and speak to the public meeting item. Please state your name, address, and spell your name for the record.
My name's Christine Brown, B-R-O-W-N. I live at four-five-three-nine Ontario Street, so I'm on the opposite, opposite side of the gentleman. I was curious if this does go through, how long will it take to construct the parking lot and make any adjustments? My husband works shift work, so noise, as anybody that lives on Ontario Street, is a battle. Especially when you work at night and you sleep during the day. So I was just curious, if it goes through, how long construction expected to last?
Is there, is there any defined timeline to?
I understand construction, you can say six weeks, it really is ten. Just would like an idea.
Mr. Bruder?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So it's, it's kind of hard to say. I'm not exactly sure, to be honest with you. I can tell you that, you know, we're going to need to be taking this away and revisiting a few of these items. It's going to take a little bit of time until we get to the point where a recommendation is going to be made in the first place. But I would say for a parking lot, such as what's been proposed, potentially could take a month, maybe a little bit less total for construction there. I'm, and I'm speculating, but that would be a guess.
The weather outside, who knows when the frost will leave?
Thank you for your question. Thank you. So we have also, you're coming down? Okay, please do.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Carolyn Edwards. I live at four-five-five-seven Ontario Street. My last name, E-D-W-A-R-D-S. I live two doors north of the proposed property changes. My concern is a major one. It's against safety, traffic. At the corner of Homestead and Ontario, traffic flies around that corner. Having even half a dozen more vehicles will make it terrible. It's, right now, the, I've gone across that street many times, and I choose to walk. I have almost been hit several times, and I had a dog that got bumped once, just because I walk a neighbor's dog. So my concern is, what's going to be done to make people stop, take a little better look? And when there's a driveway so close coming off of Ontario Street, or off of Homestead onto Ontario, I have another concern there. That it will make it worse.
Okay, well, thank you. And obviously, safety is a big part of this, so thank you for your input.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have, we have one other delegate that's coming down now. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Salvador Leva. I live on four-nine-four-three Drake Avenue. I'm here in behalf of family, Ranucci family, who live one next door to this proposal here.
Who, who is that family?
Ranucci family.
And their, do you have their address?
They live, yes, the address is four-nine, four-nine-four-seven Homestead Drive.
Okay, and they're, they're here in attendance as well?
They're here, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, well, they're concerned, they got quite a few concerned, really. When, about the snow removal, as you know, we get a lot of snow in this area. These contracts, they come at different time of the night, could be early in the morning, midnight, a late in evening. Well, they be making a lot of noise, not mentioning the flashing lights to the, to the nearby neighbors. I mean, this does not make any sense whatsoever. And going back on parking lots, it's not two, it's three or more. I just, I just want to correct that. And the other thing, the first question, Mayor Easton.
Sir, can you, can you maybe explain why you think it's more than?
Well, I've seen it. It's, it's at least three parking spaces there.
Oh, so you're, you're going by size, size of vehicle?
Well, I've seen the cars parking there, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. And the, the other question that, when Mayor Easton asked the question to Mr. Mister Donal, about running that, if he's running any, any illegal business? Yes, of course, he said no. But that place has been running business. And some of the, some of the residents already mentioned that. They've been running business from, from a couple weeks back. Matter of fact, the town of Lincoln has called me on the thirty-first January, and, and they said, "Yes, Mr. Leva." They are running, we put a stop, we sent them a letter. So I don't know how, you guys never heard anything about that? Nothing has been mentioned? I don't understand that. Especially when a question was asked, he denied, he said, "No," as we all heard. So I appreciate if you guys look into it and see what, what's going on, and take from there.
Okay, thank you.
And the other, the other thing is, as everybody mentioned, is all the concern from, from a regional eighteen to Homestead, all the, all the impacts of driving there, traffic. You know, cars are coming in and out. It's only a short distance, I believe it's only roughly a hundred feet from the edge of Ontario Street to Homestead. So, so take all that in consideration.
We appreciate it.
And do the right things, and that's all I have at the moment.
Thank you. Mayor Easton?
Mr. Leva? Thank you very much for your comments. We have a few lawyers here tonight, Mr. Leva, and I've been told on a number of occasions that if you're going to ask a question, you should know the answer before you ask it. So I well knew what the answer to the question was, and the staff had sent us a letter last week. But sometimes I like to hear people's responses in the public domain, just like I think we all do. Because we are not courting civil disobedience or breaking of the law in this community. And I think when people step outside of that, they need to account to their neighbors for it. So thank you very much for your comment as well.
Mayor?
Thank you. So we have also received correspondence from Tony and Tammy Guerrero. I think we already have, have we? Is there, is there any others that are here that want to speak to this item? So we have received correspondence from Tony and Tammy Guerrero with respect to report PD zero-zero-two-twenty Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Applications by two-seven-zero-eight-one-five-eight, Ontario Inc. And that will be part of the record as well. As there are no more speakers to, or other information for consideration to this item, I now declare this public hearing to address the Official Plan and Zoning Bylaw Amendment Applications by two-seven-zero-eight-one-five-eight, Ontario Inc., closed. Any further questions from council? Any further questions from council? Seeing none. We have a motion. The council receive official plan amendment application P L P A two zero one nine zero one nine five and zoning bylaw amendment application P L Z B A two zero one nine zero one nine four in the name of two seven zero eight one five eight Ontario Inc. for information. And that a recommendation report be prepared once all comments have been received and issued addressed. We will require a mover for the motion. Counselor Reimer? All in favor? And opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Our second public hearing is for the purpose of the PD dash zero three dash two zero zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of condominium applications by F B F Ontario Inc. We have one delegation registered this evening with respect to this public hearing. Julia Redfern from I B I Group speaking to PD zero three two zero zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of condominium application by F B F Ontario Inc. Our next presentation will take longer than five minutes and I would ask committee to extend the time of the delegation. All in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none? You're up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julia Redfern from I B I Group, the agent on behalf of the owners, F B F Ontario, for the property municipally known as four nine one eight and four nine two two King Street. Tonight I will be providing an overview of the proposed development and address any questions or concerns. The subject lands are located on the south side of King Street between Academy Street and Cherry Heights Boulevard. The subject lands have a lot area of zero point seven hectares. And a portion of the lands consists of a building known as the Woodburn Cottage designated under Part Five of the Ontario Heritage Act. The Woodburn Cottage was constructed as a single detached dwelling and can function accordingly. Currently, it is being used as a temporary office for the adjacent Cherry Heights subdivision. The single detached dwelling on four nine two two King Street was demolished in 2019. In regard to the surrounding land uses, there are existing low density single detached dwellings to the northeast and east and west. To the south of the subject lands is future residential development where medium density townhouses have been constructed. The Woodburn Cottage was built in 1834. The main house facing the street is an elegant red brick Regency Cottage with a hip roof and wooden lantern. The rear two story addition, also of red brick, was established approximately 10 years later. It has a gable roof and is oriented at right angles to the earlier structure. The building has design value because of its rare unique artistic value. The designation bylaw designates the property known as the Woodburn Cottage as being a structure of architectural and historical value or interest. The dwelling is historically associated with prominent members of the community and believed to be the first brick home in the village. Also Schedule B of Bylaw nine eight six two discusses the architectural features such as the front facade, the hip roof, the interior architectural design, but does not make mention to significance of the landscape. So two consent to sever applications were proposed to facilitate the proposed development. The first one severs off the rear portion of four nine two two King Street, which is to be used as a townhouse block that will function as part of the adjacent, adjacent Cherry Heights subdivision to the south. The second consent severs off a majority of the Woodburn Cottage property and retains the west portion to be merged with four nine two two King Street. The newly formed parcel is to be used for the proposed development. The two consent applications were delegated to the Director of Planning for approval and signing last Tuesday. The Woodburn Cottage on four nine one eight King Street is proposed to be well preserved. The remainder of the subject lands are proposed to be redeveloped with three street townhouse dwellings consisting of four units each totaling 12 units. The townhouse block to the south is proposed to function as part of the adjacent Cherry Heights subdivision. The remaining eight townhouse units will have access from King Street and onto the private road. A zoning bylaw amendment is required to facilitate the proposed development. Currently, the subject lands are zoned residential development, which permits existing development. This zone is a development zone intending that the lands so zoned shall be developed for residential purposes at a future date. Block one is proposed to be rezoned to residential multiple one zone modified with site specific provisions pertaining to lot frontage, lot area, interior side yard setback and rear yard setback. Block two is proposed to be rezoned to the residential multiple one zone modified with site specific provisions pertaining to lot frontage, lot area, interior side yard setback and rear yard setback. Block two will be zoned in accordance with site specific provisions of the adjacent townhomes in the Cherry Heights subdivision. The proposed eight units fronting onto the private road are to be created through a vacant land plan of condominium. As a vacant land plan of condominium, custom homes can be created for each of the vacant lots. These will be parcels of tied land where the private road is a common element. Various supporting studies were obtained in support of the proposed development. A cultural heritage impact assessment was prepared by Leah D. Wallace at Heritage and Planning Services. Leah concluded that the significant built heritage resources adjacent or close to the proposed development will not be unduly or adversely impacted and significant built heritage resources and landscape features will be conserved. Additionally, the heritage impact assessment made the following statements. There will not be any obstruction of significant views or vistas to or from the Woodburn Cottage. The proposed development will not impact a large portion of the open space surrounding the Regency Cottage, ensuring to conserve the setting. And the character defining elements of Woodburn would not be altered or replaced. A functional servicing report was prepared by I B I Group that reviewed the required servicing, stormwater management and utility requirements, indicating that the proposed development is currently serviceable according to all current design standards. A planning justification report was prepared by I B I Group that concluded the proposed development is consistent with the P P S and conforms to all applicable provincial and local plans and policies. Also based on a review of the subject lands, surrounding lands, supporting studies and applicable planning policy framework, the application represents good planning and will facilitate mild intensification within the town's urban area. A trip generation letter was prepared by I B I Group demonstrating that the, that based on the proposed eight units, the development is estimated to produce no more than five two way gross vehicle trips during the weekday P M peak hours when King Street is busiest. They concluded that the proposed trip volume is anticipated to be minor. A vegetation management plan was prepared by I B I Group recommending the removal of 22 trees and the preservation of 21 trees based on impacts of development and existing tree condition. A landscape plan will be provided at a detailed design stage of the planning process, which will include the planting of more trees. An open house was conducted on January 22nd, 2020 to provide the opportunity for public to offer feedback and voice any concerns prior to the statutory public meeting. A written letter was received prior to the open house with concern regarding tree preservation. One resident was in attendance and voiced concerns about an increase in traffic along King Street. And during the open house, the town voiced concerns of private road functionality and on behalf of the Heritage Committee regarding heritage compatibility. Heritage bylaw number ninety eight sixty two recognizes the structure as being of architectural and historical value or interest rather than the landscape. This means that the building is a source of the heritage value rather than the property. The legal description of the designated property was previously amended in 2018 to permit the development of two townhouse blocks along the rear of the subject lands. The legal description of the bylaw is not static, nor is it directly correlated to the reason behind the designation. The P P S must be considered in its entirety. All relevant policies of the P P S should be considered and contemplated, how they can work together. The proposed development promotes a cost effective development pattern within the built boundary that minimizes land consumption and servicing costs by effectively utilizing existing municipal infrastructure. Also, the proposed development increases the range and mix of housing in the town of Lincoln. These features of the development align with the planning direction outlined in the P P S. The P P S also states that planning authorities shall not permit development and site alteration on adjacent lands to a protected heritage property except where the proposed development has been evaluated and has been demonstrated that heritage attributes of the protected heritage property will be conserved. Therefore, the owner retained Leah D. Wallace to prepare a heritage impact assessment. Leah is the consulting heritage planner for Niagara on the Lake, a renowned municipality for heritage conservation. She is also a registered professional planner and has over 25 years of experience as a cultural heritage planner. She's a member of the Canadian Institute of Planners and the Ontario Provincial Planners Institute. Therefore, she is bound by the Code of Conduct stating that she has a responsibility to the public interest to provide full, clear and accurate information on planning matters. Also, she has a responsibility to clients and employers to provide an independent professional opinion. The heritage impact assessment provided the historical background, identified significant heritage resources and cultural heritage landscapes, and analyzed the impact of the proposed development on the protected and identified heritage resources on the Woodburn Cottage property. She concluded that the significant built heritage resources adjacent or close to the proposed development will not be unduly or adversely impacted and significant built heritage resources and landscape features will be conserved.
One minute.
We, there are conceptual King Street elevations. There are options that have consistent features to the Woodburn Cottage. There's brick and peaked roofs. We have another option here with varying building materials. These are just conceptual and will be refined during the detailed design stage to ensure compatibility with the streetscape. Here we have an image of the existing streetscape. The dwelling in the middle has been demolished. Here is a proposed rendering of what it would look like. There will be a false facade facing King Street, although the access, driveway access will be from the proposed private road. Here's another image. It doesn't accurately depict the grading because the Woodburn Cottage is slightly elevated on a hill in addition to the townhouses at the back.
Okay, I'm gonna hold you there, okay?
Okay.
So I'm gonna ask the first question as the chair. Why do we not have this presentation? There's, there's, there's. It would have been very useful to have this presentation as part of the agenda. And I think that is our request of any presenters. And I think, I think I B I Group knows that. So, you know, this is, this is disappointing that we don't have this presentation and don't have the opportunity to review it prior to the meeting. Okay?
Okay. I apologize. I did bring hard copies.
So we will start with Counselor Brunet.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Thank you, Ms. Redfern, for your presentation. You know, earlier this week, we received as, as members of the Heritage Committee, Counselor Timmers and myself sit on there as, as non-voting members but are part of the Heritage Committee. And we received some feedback from the Heritage Committee. And, you know, at that time I took the liberty to reach out to our planning staff to, to ask about the heritage component and the, the work that had gone into that. And you certainly articulated very clearly that Leah D. Wallace has a lot of credentials, has worked on a number of projects in Niagara Lake, and I respect that 110%. However, I, I just wanna, you know, I can't, I can't not, you know, state the fact that, you know, the history to this Woodburn Cottage, you know, dates back to when it was deeded to Jacob, you know, Jacob Bean back in 1801 and when it was built in 1834. So there's significance there of, of a lot of history. And it's been a property that anyone that's lived in Lincoln for any length of time knows where Woodburn Cottage is. So, you know, just bear with me for a little bit when I, when I state that there are a lot of people that have a lot of concerns. And you kind of in your presentation, you know, you kind of indicated, I believe in your words, that it wouldn't be unduly or adversely affected. So I, I just, I just wonder through you, Mr. Chair, if the presenter could, could just comment on how, in your opinion, or maybe in Ms. D. Wallace's opinion, how a proposal to sever 31% of a heritage designated property does not significantly alter the cultural landscape and streetscape?
The existing trees along the front of the property, I can actually, one moment here. So this image here kind of shows what the existing streetscape looks like. And a lot of those mature trees will remain, which cover the front of the Woodburn Cottage. And there is an existing home there that will be replaced by the location of this new home that will hopefully enhance the streetscape by being compatible with the Woodburn Cottage through features that will be decided during the site plan stage.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, if I could ask an additional question. So you also commented in your presentation, Ms. Redfern, that you felt the view would not be significantly impacted of the Woodburn Cottage. And could you just elaborate on how you're making that assumption and making that opinion?
I believe that one was provided by Leah, but I also agree if these perspectives attempt to provide a streetscape view of the property. And the Woodburn Cottage is already pretty barriered with a lot of the trees. I believe that it won't be adversely impacted by the proposed development and that it will actually complement the existing building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Mikulak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the presenter. I just, when I was looking at the, at the drawing or the report, what is the frontage of the proposed severance? I couldn't, I couldn't, I didn't have a magnifying glass strong enough to. What's the frontage on King Street? That would encompass the drive, the entranceway as well, right to the backyard?
Don't actually have it here on this plan. Just eyeballing it, it looks like it'd be approximately 30.
Thirty what?
Thirty meters wide.
Okay, and and the reason why I ask that question is because when I'm looking at your conceptual drawing here, I don't, where's the driveway to the Woodburn Cottage going to be in relation to that entrance, that road that you're proposing?
So there's gonna be a new access to the Woodburn Cottage, if you can see on this plan up here. It'll be moved onto the right side. And that's where their new drop parking area will be. And then the, where the existing entrance is will be essentially where the new entrance to the development is.
Okay, and then if I, if I may, one more question. Looking at the, you know, looking at this picture, I guess it's page 13 of your presentation. There's a big tree in the back there. It's bordering that yellow house and the house that's been demolished. Whose tree, whose property does that tree fall on and what's the fate of that tree with this development?
That tree will actually be preserved. It's on our property and it's on our vegetation management plan to be maintained.
Okay, so is there any concern about the branches that would hang over on the new build? With the roofline?
Something to consider and look at.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sorry, through, Mr. Chair. Six meters, so I think it would work.
Mayor Easton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have a question for the presenter. Did I understand you correctly that the facade of this new building is false?
I mean sort of a false. Like frontage? So it looks as though it's the front of a building where actually the access is coming in from the private road for aesthetic purposes, but it's also accessible that way. But it was designed that way for the streetscape to enhance it.
Okay, so I could walk in the front door?
Yes.
Okay. In the document, Mr. Chairman, I noticed that there is a reference to a heritage conservation area. area. And, and this, this document, which I saw for the first time over the weekend...
Sorry, which document is that?
This document. It's quite surprising to me that in this, in your, in your report, in this report, this is reference made to this heritage conservation area. And we've talked about a heritage conservation area, and it would seem to me to be the most natural thing to begin that discussion at Woodburn Cottage because of its significance. But I'm mystified by the fact that there is a very large area, I guess condominiums at the back of this, it essentially looks like at the back of a barracks, that they are condominiums and they are built and people are moving into them. And I'm trying to understand what the relationship is between that building and the concern for this building, which is part of tonight's discussion, and the viability of this entire property, not just this place where the red brick is, but the entire property and how it might fit into a heritage conservation area in the town, which could very well go from this house all the way through to and including Hickson Street, Queen Street, and William Street, which is where a large number of buildings are, including the Baptist Church, which was built by Jacob Beam, as you well know. So, are you really, are you really looking at the entire landmass here? Or is the brick house with the false front on it really your area of most concern?
No, I think it's important to consider the community as a whole. The heritage building itself is not being impacted. The proposed building is supposed to complement the existing heritage building, is not intended to adversely impact it in any way. It is going to remain on the west side of the property, and the existing building will not be changed.
Now, I, I noticed, Mr. Chairman, through you, that you did not include the, the house that we refer to as the Loyalist House, which is to the west of this, this brick house. That house isn't included, and it, in itself, has a bit of a Regency look to it. Did you consider that house and the compatibility of this building with the current, with the building that's been there for my entire life?
I have not specifically looked at that house. I'm not sure if Leah D. Wallace, the woman who prepared the heritage report, may or may not have looked into that house exactly, but I think it would be good in the future to also look at that one and the character of that house, and maybe imply some of those architectural features here as well.
Okay, well, I don't want to get into an argument about what's significant or isn't significant, but I would like you to leave here tonight understanding that I will not be looking at this as individual buildings.
Okay.
And I will be looking at the necessity of a complete look at the significance of the history of, of this town.
Yes.
And it will have to be taken into consideration, including the materials that are used to build this house, because the property that is closest to it is really quite a modest-looking building.
Right, and I agree that that's going to be important and look through the detailed design stage very closely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Timmers.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. So, through you to the delegation. I think some of my comments have already been said, but this is a designated property looking to remove 31% of its property, and I don't agree when you're saying that it's not gonna be impacted at all, because it's going to be greatly impacted. And I'm, I have concerns with the, the heritage impact assessment that's provided by the developer. It is paid for and provided by the developer, and I really feel that the town should be providing their own heritage assessment on this, this entire development. And I, I don't know who I could put that through to, maybe perhaps to Mr. Bruder to comment?
Mr. Bruder.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So, when we receive this specialist report such as this, done by a heritage planner in this instance, it's not unusual for us to receive one that's been coordinated and paid for by the developer, no different than we have specialists pertaining to stormwater, pertaining to all these other technical specialties that provide reports as well, noise, what have you. At the end of the day, these are specialists that are recognized in their field. They are held up to a certain standard, and in this case, as a professional planner, they have a code of conduct that they have to adhere to. So, in terms of them providing information, we do accept that as, you know, relevant information by a specialist. You know, is there a, a problem for it being paid for by, by a developer? I think, you know, in that case, not really, because they have to uphold a certain standard. If they don't, if they ever got challenged and it was, you know, the information that they were bringing forward was, was not factual, there were issues with it, well, I think that would damage their business retention, their credibility. So, just to provide a few comments on that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bruder. And I just, I just want to draw the, the committee's attention to the provincial policy statement that says, "Planning authorities shall not permit development and site alteration on adjacent lands to protected heritage property, except where the proposed development and site alteration has been evaluated and it has been demonstrated that the heritage attributes of the protected heritage property will be preserved or conserved." I don't know if I, if we are sure of that at this point. So, I, I really feel we need to look at this a little closer. As the mayor said, we need to look at the entire area, not just this particular building, but what else is on that streetscape, because I think it will impact that building greatly and the entire streetscape. And I also want to draw attention by the committee to the, the Heritage Committee's concerns that are included in this report, because I think they're very valid, and I would hope that everyone would read them and take them into consideration. Thank you.
Counselor Pachariva.
Thank you, Chair McPherson. A couple questions to Ms. Redfern. I appreciate the supporting studies that you've alluded to, but a reminder too that Leah D. Wallace also provided the background on the Randwood Estates property in Niagara on the Lake. And anyone that follows the newspaper has seen that's been fraught with issues. So, just wondering and through, through to staff, and I know that the other four internal reports are all commissioned by the IBI Group, will there be a peer review done of these reports in some way, shape, or form?
Mr. Bruder.
Through you, Mr. Chair, there are certain instances where, you know, I haven't necessarily seen it, at least in my tenure here, with, with heritage impact assessments, but other studies that have been subject to a peer review. I wouldn't say it's completely out of the question, given the concerns, but something that we'll have to, to take away and consider.
Okay, because, and I, and I, I appreciate Counselor Timmers' comments with respect to the Heritage Committee. She's been on there, this is her second term, and when you're removing 31% of, of a heritage property's form, you know, there's going to be some, some changes. Ms. Redfern, the, the new parking lot that's going to be established, what's the composition of that?
First off, I want to note that if you read the heritage bylaw that was prepared for the designating property and the reason behind it, it really focuses on the building itself rather than the property or the landscape. It focuses on the architectural features of the building. In terms of the parking and the proposed private road, you want to know, sorry, how it...
No, not, not, not the, not the private road, but...
Or the gravel one.
So, presently, you access Woodburn Cottage by a gravel road.
Yes.
It's going to be reestablished on the east side of the property.
Right.
What will be the composition of that new one?
It was gonna continue to function as is for the office use, the temporary...
No, I get, I get that, but what's the composition of that parking lot going to be made up of? Any idea at this point? And the reason I ask, and I'll, I'll give you a little, because, you know, the provincial policy statement says we need to conserve biodiversity and the impacts of climate change. So, presently, there's a permeable stone driveway that blends in with the character of, you know, a, a building of this form. Establishing a paved six or seven space parking lot really takes away from the heritage and the functionality and the climatic impacts of what's there presently.
Right, so the proposed parking lot will be gravel, and that's all I am aware of at this time.
Okay. Okay, so you're getting a check mark on, on my little sheet here. Now, Policy 1.4.3 also states, "Affordable, affordable to low and moderate income households are a mix of the housing market. Range and mix of housing options, Section 2.26 of the growth plan, and diversify the overall housing stock." How will this develop and achieve those points?
So, currently, a lot of the housing in the town of Lincoln, if I'm aware, is single detached. I think that this will provide more of an opportunity to provide alternate housing for a range of demographics, and also increase the range of housing opportu, like options in the town. Also, I believe that it is a more affordable type of dwelling unit than, say, a single detached dwelling in some instances. And it provides a different land tenure as well, if someone wanted a condominium versus owning their own lot. I'm sorry, owning their own single detached dwelling or larger piece of land.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Reimer.
Thank you, Counselor McPherson. Through you to the presenter, thank you, Ms. Redfern, for your, for your presentation. Has there been any thoughts to an alternative layout? Rodden Hall and St. Catharines had a, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, there, there's some similarities. I realize that the setbacks are different, but there's a fairly new project just completed across from a historic building. I'm not sure what, what the history is with Rodden Hall, but I know it's historic. And just like alternative layout, I realize you lose, you know, you're gonna lose some units and, and I guess what I'm getting at is there a way to transition from, from the cottage over? It just seems like the, the parking lot there is pretty harsh, and it's a definitive where you could change and use green scapes to, to, to minimize that effect?
How would you suggest with greens... I know we put a lot of work into this concept plan and tried out various options.
Flipping the driveway to the other side.
Oh, flipping the driveway. I think that would have actually more impede the Woodburn Cottage heritage building itself by having them a lot closer and the streetscape view of the building, just from a quick glance, but it could be considered more.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This isn't a question, it might be a question to, to staff, but it's more, again, a concern that I'm seeing a trend over the past year and a bit that I've been on council. We seem to be seeing, I think this is the fourth or the fifth development in my tenure, that developers are, seem to be skirting some issues with uses of private roads, and again, pushing higher number of units into that smaller space using private road as a, as an access point. And again, I know it may align with some of the municipal or the provincial requirements, but to me, I, I just want to ask to staff, again, is this something that, is it a trend that we are seeing across the region? Is this something that's unique to Lincoln? And maybe just a general question to council, is this something that we want to keep abiding by going forward and, again, putting higher number of units onto smaller parts of the land and using that private road as an access point? Again, it's just, it's a point of concern that I have, again, trying to maintain the aesthetics of the town. And again, that's not even notwithstanding it being adjacent to a heritage designated site, so it's just a general concern. So, just wondering if staff might be able to respond to that.
Mr. Bruder.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Good question for sure, Counselor. You're right, a lot of policy wording at the provincial level and at other levels lends itself to more efficient use of land, more housing options, as the presenter said. So, to answer your question, yes, it is something we're seeing more and more of, developments going in off of private road, and I wouldn't even say it's just region-wide, it goes far beyond that. You know, I think a lot of municipalities across Ontario and even beyond that are seeing this more and more, just because the need to more efficiently develop land in the urban areas is, is very important now, and especially in Lincoln, just because we don't have much of it. So, I, I would say, yeah, this is a trend we're gonna continue to see. I get the points for sure, it being adjacent to a heritage property, and I get it with regard to massing and, and streetscape, which is why, you know, our urban design guidelines, we do acknowledge that this type of development's going to be happening here and there. That's why we require things like what's being shown in terms of wraparound features to make it look more like it addresses the street properly, as if it's the front of the, of the unit. So, there are things that we consider from an urban design standpoint to, to mitigate that, coming in off of a private road. So, just some thoughts for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mara Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. To this, to the presenter, have there been any discussions about the number of units that, that are being proposed here, considering that the land to, to the south is, I think we could say that it has met some considerable requirements around density? This is a small postage stamp of, of land that the developer is looking to fill up again. Did you consider decreasing that number or possibly just putting one house on the property?
I think that the eight units more efficiently utilizes the existing space and is in line with provincial policy, and also balances efficiently function, the function of the property.
So, I guess in answer to the question, Counselor Russell's question, we can expect that every piece of land will be looked at individually and not at all in concert with the look and feel of the property around it.
I think it is a balancing act, and you should consider the properties around it as well. It is a medium density beside it, whereas we are also going towards a medium density designation, rather than proposing, say, a high story beside it, single detached.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, will we have another opportunity to talk about the instructions that staff will be taking away from this when we move to the other part of the agenda?
Well, we, we have a motion, which is basically to receive the information tonight.
Okay, well, then, then if you would allow me, I, I just want to reinforce that I believe that there is merit, and I have to tell you, I am very, very concerned about your answer in regard to two questions that have been asked about 31% of the property. I understand that every element of a house is not identified in the designating documentation of a house, and however, we are placing greater emphasis on the placement of trees, the selection of trees that we are using, the size of trees, and the green space is becoming more and more important. Mr. Chairman, I would advise that we look at absolutely every element of this proposal in great detail, so that when we, so that we are disassembling it and so that when we reassemble it, we will know exactly what we are going to be left with. I do not want any surprises. And that's going to include design plus architecture. That isn't any kind of a no, it just means it's not gonna be a pass. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, before we go to Counselor Mikulak, I, I'm gonna jump in right there, and I'm going to share with you that when I look at this, this development, I really question the fit. The fit being on King Street, on our main street, and the, in our, basically, our central business district. And I think about a house that was built probably 15 years ago in Jordan. There's a house that's about three down from the new museum project that was built in the look and feel of Jordan. And I think about this property, and I, I think about all of the houses, and you can pretty much start at Bartlett and come west, and all of those homes along King Street are all probably pushing 100 years or more. And to introduce a condominium complex on King Street, I struggle with. So, I'm thinking about your entrance from the cachet development. So I'm thinking about your entrance from the cachet development. And not to just build a home, which I think we need to consider, building a home on King Street, the likes of which you see down in Jordan, that would fit more within the feel of King Street. And then behind it, accessed from whatever drive that is, build condominium units that are tied into the cachet development. So that's where I'm at. You know, I think that, I think we gotta be very careful in changing the landscape of King Street this significant, at this point on King Street. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I'm going along that same line. When I, when I...
Oops, sorry, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, like, I'm going along that same line. When I drive into Beamsville, it has like an Elickettville flair, like, you know, it has an old town flair. And I'm concerned we're gonna be losing that with what, you know, the bricks and mortar that we're presented with. A question that I have is with regards to process, I'm looking at Google Street View and there was an old house on that property. What's the process? What was the process with the demolition of that house? How did that happen? How, is there a process or a procedure that a developer has to follow? It appears to be somewhat of a historical house, but I have no idea. Maybe staff might have a better answer for that.
Mr. Bruder.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, so typically, when a house or a unit needs to be demolished, whoever's doing that is required to obtain a demolition permit from our building department before they do so. In this case, you're right, you know, the house, it did, I think it was on a list of potential sites, but it wasn't actually a designated heritage site, so in that case, our building department wasn't able to withhold the demolition permit. So that's how the process unfolded.
And the reason why I go there is, a lot of times when you're making an application for a process, for a development like this, you wait to tear down the houses until you know you're going to receive the wish that you're granted. And in this case, it just seemed like a quick rush to knock down that house. And I don't know, for whatever reason, whether, what condition it was in, or was it justified? I don't know. But that's something that I'm wondering about. And then I have one more question with regards to that tree in the back, and this might go to staff as well. Should, should the development move forward and that tree somehow go down or somehow be deemed a nuisance that needs to be taken down? What measures do we have? What's the, what happens in that case? How does the, how would the tree defend itself?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, as, I believe at this point, you know, we talked about tree preservation plan that's being developed, and we have a detailed design component that comes after this, a site plan process, so that tree will be identified for retention. So, you know, should it come down, then that wouldn't be in compliance with the approved plan that we have. So for that reason, we would need to see that tree retained.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for the presentation. So at this time, are there any other persons present this evening to address PD-0320 zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of condominium application by FBF Ontario Inc.? Please approach the podium, come forward, state your name, address, and spell your surname for the record.
Alan, A-L-A-N, Wojcik, W-O-J-C-I-K, 3604 Glen Elgin Drive, Jordan. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to address this matter for council. My comments will be in my capacity as chairman of the Municipal Heritage Committee for Lincoln. This is a subject matter that's dear to the heart of the committee. We find this development proposal, if I can use the word, obnoxious on every level. It should not be supported by this town, council, or the planning department. And I encourage Matt Bruder to become more familiar with the Ontario Heritage Act. If he were, you'd understand there are tools available. I hear tonight that the adjacent property, an older building that was on the list of designated properties, was torn down. The demolition permit granted, but there are enhanced tools now within the Ontario Heritage Act and the recent amendments for the town to be proactive and to deny developers the ability to demolish properties, even if that property is on the, just the list. The comments from the, Ms. Redfern, representing the developer, I found largely superficial on many levels. It showed a lack of understanding of due diligence when it comes to dealing with a designated heritage property. So I need to ask this question. Was the Ministry of Culture notified or informed that we have this proposable forest that virtually quashes a designation bylaw of a significant heritage property? That is potentially illegal, for one thing, and opens legal risk for the town of Lincoln. So I encourage you, if that did not happen, to pursue it. Having worked for over 20 years at the Ministry of Culture, including the Ontario Heritage Trust, I can tell you, the minister can get involved in this instance, and there are a number of options available. There's a stop work order issued by the minister, and I think if the minister became knowledgeable about this file, I can't see that being a problem. I do note that the ministry is now the Ministry of Heritage. Other options include a conservation review board hearing. It's a quasi-legal entity. I think it was Greg who mentioned Randwood earlier. That is the avenue right now. The residents are so annoyed with the developer in that instance, it's triggered a conservation review board hearing. It's basically a tribunal. It has legal status, the ability to issue fines, subpoenas. It's under oath. The oath is quite stringent. So those are opportunities that are available to the town. You did receive our report from the Heritage Committee that articulates and hopefully provides clarity for our concerns. Again, it's an obnoxious proposal on every level. I mean, for the planner behind me, Julia Redfern, to say the heritage attributes of this property will not be affected, well, that's not the case. 31% of the property is being severed on title? How can you do that? Think about it. Jacob Beam is probably spinning in his grave right now, knowing that his natural landscape will be irreparably damaged for future generations.
Mr. Wojcik, we're down to one minute.
Yeah, so I think I've raised my points, and I hope you get a chance to read our concerns. Again, this project should not be approved by the town of Lincoln, and the planner mentioned affordable housing. Just looking at the diagrams, these townhouses will sell in excess of $700,000, if not more. That is not affordable housing. There are better options for the town of Lincoln, and I encourage council to give serious consideration to denying all the applications before us. If I could just make two quick points?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Please make them quick.
Construction activity. The committee noticed there's construction activity to the west of the property. Looks like a bulldozer carved a driveway through the property. Was a archaeological assessment done by the developer? This is a heritage property, protected by law. Shocking to see that. Another point, the heritage designation bylaw clearly defines the boundary. You're literally tearing that designation bylaw that's on title. The owner would have had to have signed for that and would have been orally told about it. You can't do that. It's against the law.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you.
I'm calling for a second time for anyone to approach council and speak to the public meeting item.
If you could, I'd just like you to stay for this.
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Good evening, John Frattoni. I'm here, 4311 Central Avenue. I'm here representing FBF Group. There's been so many misquoted facts this evening, particularly, I find offensive, the scare tactics brought on by the Heritage Committee. I find that offensive, sir. We did everything right in this development. The house that we knocked down, it was put on the list because of its age. Nobody went into that house. We went into that house. That house was knocked down because it was in derelict condition. The whole structure had been supported by modern beams and posts. The roof, there was a fire in the roof. The whole roof rafter system was ready to fall down. That house leaned 18 inches front to back and 16 inches east to west. That house was deemed to be, and I've been told by, on more than one occasion, by more than one resident, and more than one staff member, and more than one council member, that that was an eyesore in the town of Lincoln that needed to be taken down. We followed all the rules. We came in, we applied for our permits. Our permit was granted to us. We knocked it down, Counselor McLaughlin. We knocked it down in a hurry so that there would be no damage done to the existing house, that there was two feet separation between that house and the yellow house next door that may or may not have heritage designation on it. I don't know. That's why we knocked it down quickly. That house was leaking in the basement, three sump pumps running constantly. They had to lift the heater up off the ground. The Heritage Committee put it on the list because of its age. Nobody had gone through it, not one person from the Heritage Committee. In regards to severing 31% of this land, if anybody would like to come to site, and I invite the Heritage Committee, I invite any counselor to come to site. Madam Mayor, you're more than welcome to come. Our development is designed to enhance Woodburn Cottage. Right now, what we're taking up is a vacant piece of land where you say there was a bulldozer that went through and bulldozed everything. There was a heritage, three and a half year archaeological assessment done on our property. Three and a half years to the cost of $5.5 million. I think that was enough. I think we did our due diligence. So yes, we have everything that we've needed. What we're taking up is the old property where the vacant, where the derelict house was, and our parking lot, right now. You can't see Woodburn Cottage. Counselor McPherson, you said everybody knows. Counselor Pachariva, everybody knows Woodburn Cottage. When I tell people, our office is at Woodburn Cottage, they're like, where is that? I said, it's the house that's set back up. You can't see it in the summertime. What we're doing is we're cleaning it up. The trees at the front are overgrown, half of them are rotted in the middle. There's raccoons that live in there. We're cleaning it up to make it more presentable. We're doing the false facade, like Julia had said, to incorporate the look of downtown. Because, Mayor Easton, you know as well as I do, everything on the south side, from Cherry Heights to Woodburn Cottage, there isn't any architectural feature on any of those houses, from Cherry Heights to Woodburn Cottage, on the south side of King Street, that I would want to incorporate into a building. Woodburn Cottage, yes, we have, if you look at the drawings, it's red brick, it's stone, it's hardy board siding, which is concurrent with, across the street from us beside Great Lakes Christian College, it's all stone. Woodburn Cottage is all brick. The Loyalist House is brick and siding. The Yellow House is siding. Everything going down King Street towards the downtown. On the corner of Academy Street and King Street, there's a white siding house. Is that an architectural feature I want to put in? No. This is what we're doing to beautify the town. We are opening up Woodburn Cottage to make it more visible. We're building affordable housing in the shape of bungalow townhouses that won't sell. If you want to buy one for $750, I would gladly sell you one for $750.
Mr. Frattoni, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Now, don't go away. I have, Mr. CAO would also like to make a few comments.
Mr. Chair, and I guess just a general comment, and I usually don't chime in, I'm gonna repeat what I said at the previous stage, in that this is just an opportunity to hear comments from the public. No decisions have been made. I wish our Chair of Heritage had been here to hear this, but I don't think it's ever beneficial to go after municipal staff. Staff are professional in everything we do. We do try to review every piece of policy set out by the province, and I think any of us that have worked in government in whatever fashion know that we do bring that level of expertise, that level of respect for things we hear in the public. And so, I'm not often as passionate as I am right now, and again, I wish our Chair had been here to hear this, except he's giving a media interview at this particular point in time. But comments, I think attacking personally the integrity of staff are always offside to me, and I think we're often open to criticism. It comes with the role. I see a number of other people here who have worked in government, and I think they would attest to the fact that that is not necessarily how we conduct business. But that being said, those are my comments for committee.
Thank you, and thank you.
Do I have a comment? Mike, you have the CAO's analysis.
Can we?
Staff did put us through the wringers after our, our initial meeting with them. They came back with a whole pile of recommendations that has created what you saw before you.
Okay.
So I really applaud staff for doing, as Mike said, very professional and holding us to accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Frattoni being our second delegate, I'm calling for a third and final time for anyone to come forward and speak to the public meeting item. Seeing nobody, we have also received correspondence from, as was mentioned, Municipal Heritage Committee with respect to report PD-0320 zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of condominium application by FBH Ontario Inc. As there are no more speakers or other information for consideration to this item, I declare this public hearing to address the PD-0320 zoning bylaw amendment and draft plan of condominium application by FBF Ontario Inc. closed. Are there any further questions from council? Seeing none, there being no further discussion, I have a motion that council receives zoning bylaw amendment application PLZ BA 20190192 and draft plan of vacant land condominium application PLCVL 20190196 in the name of FBF Ontario Inc. for information. And then a recommendation report be prepared once all comments have been received and any identified issues have been addressed. I need a mover for the motion. Counselor Pachariva, all in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. So we have now conducted the statutory public meeting section of the agenda. We will now rotate to allow Vice Chair Bernay to assume the chair at this time for the communication, sorry, for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda, but we are going to take a short recess of 10 minutes. So I would ask that the public return for a resumption of the meeting at 20 past 8:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now going to continue with our agenda for the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee. Item 5.1, we have no delegations this evening for Community Services and Infrastructure. So we will move right into 5.2, a report. We are now considering item 5.2, PW-01-20, the Region of Niagara 2020 Waste Management Lincoln's Enhanced Services. And our Director of Public Works, Mr. Dave Graham, would like to provide some introductory remarks. Mr. Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the report before committee tonight is really looking at enhanced services that the Niagara Region Waste Management Department will offer through the new contract. So what we're providing council tonight with our updated pricing that has come back as part of the region's new waste collection contract, and what those enhanced services look like in terms of the updated costs. What we're asking council to consider tonight is that we have enhanced services for the town of Lincoln as it relates to all the large garbage containers, dumpsters if you will, at all of our town facilities and parks that we participate in the enhanced service waste collection program. It's worked very well for the town, and we're recommending that council continue with the service as part of the new Waste Management Contract, which is proposed to start October of 2020 this year. I'd also like to acknowledge Sherri Tate is here from the Niagara Region, who is the Acting Manager of Collection and Diversion from the Waste Management Department. And she is here tonight to help answer any questions council may have as it relates to the new Waste Management Contract if there's any questions. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Graham, and welcome, Ms. Tate. And I will now go to Counselor Mikulak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Graham. Just curious with regards to the enhanced servicing and the extra dumpsters that we're looking for. The increase in cost, is this something that we're bound to using the region with regards to the enhanced servicing? Like, I know other municipalities are looking to break away from, or attempt to break away from that contract and go it alone. Are we bound with the enhanced servicing, or can we seek tenders from others?
Through Mr. Chairman to the counselor, we're not bound. I mean, it is an optional service that the town can consider, you know, whether you want to continue with or not through the Niagara Region's contract. I would definitely recommend that we continue with this service. You know, some of the increased costs that you're seeing in this report related to that specific enhanced service. We did add an additional bin dumpster for the Fleming Center. So this round of enhanced service contract, one of the reasons that's increased is because we have added another dumpster. And then the region did experience, you know, cost increases with their new contract. You know, what I can say is, for the Fleming Center, we were using a private contractor for one of the bins because the Fleming Center was built a little bit more recently, and it wasn't part of that original contract with the region. And those costs were a lot higher than what we're looking at through the region's program. So from staff's perspective, we are getting reasonable costs with this service.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Mary Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I wondered if Ms. Tate would come to the podium, please. Hello. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming here this evening. Do you have a copy of the report?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Could you just go to page 63, please? I wanted to clarify, this is in paragraph four. Should the town want to provide this optional enhanced service? A little bit later in that paragraph, there's a reference to bulky goods pickup. And I know that there are some people here that are interested in that service for single-family dwellings, which is not what's being referred to here. This is for the MR properties. My question is, would you please just reinforce what the arrangements are for single-family dwellings so that it can just be on the public record?
Through the chair. Currently, our bulky goods collection is available to single-family dwellings. So those residents and low-density residential homes, so your single family, and those with, in apartments up to six units. That is collected year-round, and residents can call one of the collection contractors and book a pickup at least two days prior to their collection day. Changes for this collection contract is currently, there's no limit on that. But for the new collection contract, there'll be a limit to four items per pickup. But you're not limited in the amount that you can call in. So every week, you could technically call in for collection of those bulky items.
And Mr. Chairman, just to be sure, that is part of the base service, and it's not part of an enhanced service?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I know that there is quite a lot in the newspaper about the potential for one municipality to be moving in a different direction. But we do have to take into consideration that we don't know what their motivations are. And that is not being made clear at all. It's not something that's been discussed at the region, at any public meeting. So there's really no way for us to measure the viability of the viability impact if one member removes themselves from the agreement that we have. And the original agreement is part of the Niagara Act. And all municipalities when the Niagara Act was passed, signed on to provide a regional, to provide waste collection as a regional service. Thank you very much.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just a comment, and it's with regards to the increases. And I'm going to say at the outset that I know we're not talking about a lot of money. So I'm not suggesting in any way that we go chasing around for, you know, three bids, and let's, you know, really investigate this thing. But I will say that I'm frustrated with the letter coming out of the region. And frustrated in that the region is telling us, basically, eat it, or, you know, you have no option, basically, is what I read into that thing. It referenced increases that were going from 20% to 114%. So they're basically saying, you've got it good. There are other communities out there that are looking at 100% or 114%. Well, you know what? That's not the way that I think we should be communicating adjustments to our costs. I think there is merit in, okay, we've added a bin, all right? What is the cost of that bin? What are we paying extra because we've increased our contract? And how does that blend into the 21,000? You know, I really, you know, if I'd have sat in front of a customer in my work life and handed them an increase and said, well, you're lucky, others are getting 114% price increase. They said, see ya, we'll go figure it out. You know what? You know, it's just, it's what will the market bear? Now, if this is the best we can do, you know, and we market-tested it, great. But I just struggle with the messaging that we're getting from the region and how that relationship is, and how we're not challenging at the region with, well, show us how this increase, how we arrived at this increase. It's not just, well, we negotiated a new contract, so you're going to get another, well, I calculated it as 42%. From 15,000 to 21,000, it's 42%. I don't think I got a 42% increase through in my entire 38 years as the marketing manager of a Canadian division. It's just astronomical. The numbers are small, I get it. But I just think we've got to be stronger on, tell us why. Show us how this increase, break it down for us. Where is the increase coming from? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. Ms. Tate, I give you the opportunity, if you wanted to make a comment to that, or we can just move on.
Sure.
I just give you the opportunity.
I can make a comment. So through the chair, yes, we did, obviously, that was not the intent of that letter is to say, take or leave it. It is up to, we're providing the pricing, and it is up to the local municipalities to decide whether or not they want to continue with that service through our contract or not. So there is a few reasons why the contract pricing has increased, which was outlined in that letter, due to, you know, overall increase of truck costs, insurance costs, that we are not alone in seeing. Other municipalities who have put out request proposals have been seeing that increased costs come back as well. Another reason why you're going to see an increase in costs is that the current contract with Amtera was about $4 million less than the next bid that came in. So that significant decrease in price, or by Amtera, you will see that there is a jump based on such a low cost that Amtera provided for this current contract.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. We now have a motion to receive and file, receive and file PW-01-20, the Region of Niagara 2020 Waste Management Collection Service Contract, Lincoln's Enhanced Services, and approve the updated pricing provided by the Niagara Region for enhanced containerized garbage collection at town facilities as outlined in Community Services and Infrastructure Report, PW-01-20, and continue with the service. We will require a mover for the motion. Counselor Russell, all in favor? Anyone opposed? And that is carried unanimously. We are now moving to item 5.3, Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes Act of Transportation Citizen Committee Minutes from November 21, 2019, the Age Friendly Citizen Committee Minutes from December 5, 2019, and the Lincoln Public Library Board Minutes from December 17, 2019. Would any member like to remove the item, any item from the Consent Agenda to discuss? Counselor Pachariva.
Thanks, Chair Bernard. Yes, item 5.2.1, just a small discussion point that I wanted to highlight in a couple of housekeeping issues.
Okay, so we will consider this item now, and please proceed, Counselor Pachariva.
Thanks, Chair Bernard. With respect to the Work Plan Overview, the Act of Transportation Committee would like to review and provide feedback on all upcoming staff reports. And they actually made a motion at January's meeting to be a commenting agency. And just the housekeeping, Chair Andrew Bowles wasn't there that evening. So Michael McRonald, who's the Vice Chair, chaired the meeting. So on the last page, it should be Vice Chair McRonald declared the meeting adjourned at 8:00 PM as Chair Bowles wasn't there. So just housekeeping item.
Thank you, Counselor Pachariva, for those comments and those clarifications. And I'm seeing that the clerk is diligently correcting that. Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure who, I was looking for Madam Clerk, but she isn't here this evening. And I was looking for her, so maybe Mr. CAO can help us. I would like some clarification on the role of an advisory committee providing routine commentary on staff reports.
Mr. CAO. Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor. I think at first glance, in this particular case, you know, it absolutely makes sense. But I think it needs to be applicable to the type of report going forward. So I would not say every report needs to go forward and have them as a commenting agency. But if we've got reports pertaining to various community services, parks, recreation, culture, some of our roadworks, I think they can act as a group that we would consult with. That already happens on a fairly regular basis. But I would say if the committee is looking for something that's a little bit more formal in terms of that interaction, that we can definitely incorporate that into our, I think, into our SOPs and just the way we do business.
All right. Mr. Chairman, from a governance perspective, I would like to suggest that we make whatever changes and clarifications are required as opposed to finding ourselves in a situation where we're unclear about why we began doing this. I don't have an issue with it as long as it's built into our governance models going forward. Because it seems that the same, I think, the same need for information where it relates to the advisory committees is being, I'm recognizing it in a number of different minutes. And I wonder if you have any further comments, Mr. Chairman, through you on that.
Through, Mr. Chair, I mean, it's absolutely something I think we can incorporate from a governance perspective in a more official capacity. And so I'm looking at Trish, our deputy clerk, and something that we can take up with both Julie, Trish, and Rebecca in terms of how to make that process a little bit more official so that the Act of Transportation Committee can continue with the role that they are playing.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. CAO. So seeing no further questions, we have a motion that council received for information, the Act of Transportation Citizen Committee Minutes of November 21, 2019. And I will require a mover for the motion. Counselor McPherson, all in favor? Anyone opposed? And that is carried unanimously. So we now have the other two minutes, the Age Friendly and the Lincoln Public Library Board. So we will require a mover for the motion to pass the remaining consent agenda items. And Counselor Timmers, thank you. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And that is carried unanimously. We are now into item 5.4, Confidential Items. We will now be considering confidential items. And I will require a mover to proceed into closed session for the purposes of, under Section 239 of the Municipal Act, notices hereby given that committee adjourned to closed session in order to address the position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on by or on behalf of the municipality or local boards as it pertains to Vineland Station Number Three. I will need a mover. Counselor Pachariva, all in favor? Anyone opposed? And that is carried unanimously. So, Madam Clerk, can you advise me as to whether council is moving, or... Okay, so we're going to adjourn to the council room. Thank you.
So we have Councilor Reimer moving the motion that committee resume in open session and receive the update provided by the CAO, the Director of Community Services, and the Fire Chief regarding Vineland Station Number Three. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And that is carried unanimously. We now have concluded the Community Services and Infrastructure Committee agenda, and we will now rotate to allow Chair McPherson to assume the chair at this time for the continuation of the Planning and Economic Development Committee agenda.
We are now considering confidential items. I will require a mover to proceed into closed session for the purposes of, under Section 239 of the Municipal Act, notice is hereby given that committee adjourn to closed session in order to address advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose as it pertains to report PD 0420, zoning bylaw amendment application by 1473944 Ontario Limited. I will require a mover to reconvene in -- sorry, we have -- we need a mover. Councilor Pachariva, all in favor? Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. We will move into closed session. Those opposed? That is carried unanimously. We will move into closed session.
Okay. So I have a motion that committee resume an open session and that committee receive information and advice provided by legal counsel in closed session regarding PD 04-20 zoning by law amendment application by 1473944 Ontario Limited. Looking for a mover for that motion, Counselor Russell. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. I also have a motion that, from a time standpoint. So I require a two-thirds vote to waive the rules to extend the meeting past 10:00 PM to consider the remaining unfinished business on the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. And for those that are here in the, in the audience, we will be referring, sorry, deferring the report back to staff this evening. And I would ask our CAO to speak to the process.
Three, Mr. Chair, just some brief comments further to your reference to a deferral of committee report PD 0420 zoning by law amendment. As you've highlighted, we will be deferring and tabling this report for a public meeting that will be forthcoming with notice. It does appear that notice was not provided, and so out of an abundance of caution, committee will be taking that deferral process. And during that time, we will notify the various parties of when that new date is scheduled.
So we will entertain the delegations this evening for this report. So we plan to carry on with that. So a reminder that to all registered delegations that you have five minutes to speak to your item. We have Craig Rowe still here from Upper Canada Consultants speaking to report PD 04-20 zoning by law amendment application by 1473944 Ontario Limited. Mr. Rowe?
Just kind of reviewing the agenda, it appears that the public presentation here queued up is actually from the public meeting. It's not the revised one that followed up on council. I have the zip drive though, so.
Great.
Yeah, we can just insert here.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Great, thanks. Is this normal? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Good evening again. For the record, Craig Rowe, Senior Planner with Upper Canada Consultants, agent representing the owner of the property who are with me this evening. So when we last, last met in October, we were, there were several comments that were provided, both from the public and from members of council. So what we've done is we've gone back to the drawing board, we've digested those comments, and then we've made some changes to the plan based on that. So it's my intent to be very brief this evening, just highlight some of the physical changes that have been made to the plan, as well as provide some of those clarifications for the questions that were brought up before. So as it stands, this was the original plan that was brought before you with 10 units. We knew that there were some, some of the dialogue from the neighbor about concerns over setbacks and the way that this was positioned and layout. So as I transition the slides, you'll see what the, the new plan looks like. So I'll just, I'll just flip that again, just for the benefit of committee there. Okay, so as we transition the slides, the basic, the biggest physical change has been the reduction of units from 10 down to nine, and also the provision of a 7.5 meter, about a 25 foot setback from the adjacent property owner to the north. You know, the, based on the comments we received, we, we respect those concerns and we feel that this is sufficient. It's also in line with the requirements of the zoning by law. We've also reduced the, the depth of the unit five. This is in response to some MPCA comments, there appear to be some slight encroachment into the 7.5 meter setback from the stable top of slope. And lastly, we just reconfigured the interior of some of these units, so they've expanded a little bit in scale, and that's just for efficiencies of building design. So in terms of clarifications, we wanted to provide clarification on the following matters. The first was about the driveway, I believe it was Counselor Russell has some concerns about driveway slope and, and things to that effect. So we've calculated the, the slope of the driveway, and that's a measure between six and eight percent, which from an engineering perspective is considered safe. I don't have any examples in Beamsville to show you to that effect, but we have checked it. Some of the concerns were about vehicles that may be going through a intersection, possibility of collision. We would be willing to entertain the provision of possibly a four-way stop in this location. It would also serve as traffic calming between Highland Park and then going into Vista Ridge. It could have a universal benefit, we feel, for the, for the neighborhood as a whole. The second matter was about stormwater. Again, I'll reiterate, all stormwater must be captured on site. It can't leave the property. It'll be stored in underground pipes, and it will be treated through an oil grit separator and then put into the local municipal network, which is out on Highland Park Drive. With regards to landscape and screaming, screaming, screening, that will, our landscape plan that we provide before demonstrates how we, we plan to screen, we'll be amending this to provide additional landscaping along the interface with that neighbor to the north. In terms of the EIS, there were certain concerns about the removal of trees on the property. I will reiterate that the EIS was prepared by a qualified professional. Based on their assessment, the woodlot is not considered a significant woodlot. But that being said, we are also required to provide a forest edge woodland plan, as well as a tree savings plan that must be completed before we go into any site clearing or anything to that effect. So there's an additional control in there, and that would be enhancing the interface with the valley through plantings on private and back in the, in the, on the western side into the vegetated area, as well as on our own property preserving a trees that may be appropriate. And the final matter was greenfield density. So it's a greenfield site, so unlike that previous item, we talked about downtown, the vacant land condo, it's greenfield. We need to hit 50 people and jobs per hectare. The original plan proposed a density of 54 people and jobs per hectare. With the reduction of one unit, we're now down to 49, although it's below, is calculated on a regional average. And from a planning perspective, it generally conforms with what the requirement is from planning policy. So as I know it, I just wanted to be brief this evening. We're aware of some submissions that have been made, and certainly would welcome any comments you have, but I would just like to reiterate, from an objective planning perspective on this development, it conforms with the PPS and it meets all applicable provincial, regional, and local plans.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
So we now have a delegation. We have Liz Benyon speaking to report PD 04-20 zoning by law amendment application by 1473944 Ontario Limited. Ms. Benyon.
So, have you heard?
Do you want to get, thank you.
As you heard, I'm Liz Benyon, and my address is 3150 Culp Road in Jordan Station. So one of the shortfalls of the planning process is it tends to look at each property as a unique entity onto itself, not as a piece of a much larger landscape, and we heard about that earlier tonight with another property. In fact, on page 33 of the EIS for this proposed development property, it states, "The assessment of cumulative impacts as a result of urbanization of rural areas of the town of Lincoln or Niagara region is outside the scope of the EIS. For this reason and because we lack robust natural systems protection policies from the provincial level down to the municipal level, southern Ontario has lost virtually all of its woodlands and wetlands." This map is from Conservation Ontario, and as you can see, along the lakeshore in Niagara forest cover is between five and 15%. Environment Canada says 30% is required for a functioning ecology, and more than 50% is needed to aid in adaptation and mitigation to climate change. The second map shows wetland loss in southern Ontario, and as you can see, it's about 85%. What this means is we no longer have enough natural areas to support a functioning ecology. The map you are seeing is a 2011 map, and it shows forest cover in this area, which is the sort of gold colored area, that's the Beamsville area, was 13.8%, which is less than half that's needed for ecological integrity and a healthy environment. This map points out where Lincoln's fragment of forest cover remains, and you'll see that it's mostly along the escarpment. And when you look at this, you can see, in fact, I'll just go to the next map, because you can see it more clearly. The area that is in this development application is close to where that red spot is, and you'll see that that's part of a vital corridor between the escarpment lands going down to the lake and in fact east-west across the escarpment. So in, in section 4.6 of the town's official plan, in terms of corridors and linkages, it states that it recognizes that individual features and components of the natural heritage system in the official plan forms part of a greater ecosystem which is highly dependent on connectivity, and the town will require proponents of new developments or site alteration that is subject to an EIS to assess corridor linkages, and if possible, maintain or enhance such linkages. I didn't see this in the EIS. In the region's official plan, it states where development on-site alteration is proposed in or near potential natural heritage corridors, the corridor should, should be considered as part of the, as part of the review process. Development should be located, designed, and constructed to maintain, and where possible, enhance the ecological functions of the corridor in linking natural core areas, or an alternative corridor should be developed. Does this regional policy apply to this land? The EIS seems to downplay the amount of forested cover on the area to be developed, but as you can see from this aerial photo, and I think I went too far, sorry. So as you can see from this aerial photo, the area is quite vegetated, and there's a lot of forest cover. And this is significant habitat, whether it's significant forest under the regionals by law or not, it's significant habitat to a lot of animals. If the town wants to protect Lincoln's remaining, remaining natural heritage, the best way to do it is probably through a natural heritage system plan, and I don't have time to talk about that in this presentation, but I would be happy to have someone ask me questions about it. This is the natural heritage system, I don't know why this is doing this, sorry. This is a natural heritage system plan that Oakville created, and it became a OMB case that is able to be used now by anybody to protect their natural heritage system. I give up on that. Okay, so it's important to note, this isn't about the, this development in particular, but note in the EIS that it said that there is ECA significant woodland identified by the region and town to occur in forested valley that lies adjacent to the subject lands. This EIS has also identified that Forest Valley also supports a number of wildlife functions and features, and could warrant an ECA significant wildlife designation for the valley. The strong suggestion in that was that that valley be designated, so pay attention to that in the EIS. So I came here to make the case for protecting this woodland, not because I'm, you know, just concerned about the environment, which I am, but also because this could impact my land. So I have a, a piece of property that's four acres, it backs onto a natural forest, and if this land isn't protected, neither is mine or my next door neighbors. So it's concerning, we have, we don't have the forest cover or the wetlands that we used to have, and we need to protect the fragments that are left. And I'm very sorry about this PowerPoint, it, I don't know what was going on. If I even looked at it, it was moving, so I'm sorry about that. If you have any questions.
Yes, any questions from council? Counselor Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Benyon. Again, just wondering if you know the timeline of how long it took for Oakville
This is a natural heritage system plan that Oakville created, and it became an OMB case that is able to be used now by anybody to protect their natural heritage system. I give up on that. Okay, so it's important to note, this isn't about this development in particular, but note in the EIS that it said that there is ECA significant woodland identified by the region and town to occur in forested valley that lies adjacent to the subject lands. This EIS has also identified that Forest Valley also supports a number of wildlife functions and features, and could warrant an ECA significant wildlife designation for the valley. The strong suggestion in that was that that valley be designated, so pay attention to that in the EIS. So I came here to make the case for protecting this woodland, not because I'm, you know, just concerned about the environment, which I am, but also because this could impact my land. So I have a piece of property that's four acres, it backs onto a natural forest, and if this land isn't protected, neither is mine or my next door neighbors. So it's concerning, we have, we don't have the forest cover or the wetlands that we used to have, and we need to protect the fragments that are left. And I'm very sorry about this PowerPoint, I don't know what was going on. If I even looked at it, it was moving, so I'm sorry about that. If you have any questions.
Yes, any questions from council? Council Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Benyon. Again, just wondering if you know the timeline of how long it took for Oakville to get their natural heritage plan enacted?
We refer to it as a seven-year war, because that's how long citizens were fighting for a natural heritage system. It took us about four years to convince the town that that was the best way to go. And once they did the mapping, so it was a combination of the region, the MNR, and the local conservation authority in the town that all worked together to do the mapping, where they identified the most environmentally sensitive areas, they put adequate buffers around them, and then they linked them together. And once they knew where they couldn't develop, then they knew where they could, protected about 25% of the land. So once all that was done, and the town zoned it as natural heritage, then the developers took them to the OMB. I think there were 27 developers that took the town to the OMB, and the town prevailed. So it became a precedent-setting decision that any community can use to protect their natural areas. And it was triggered by rezoning. So this is an application that's asking for rezoning that could trigger natural heritage.
One follow-up, Mr. Chair, did that start with a citizen-led committee, or?
It started with a citizen group, it was four people who found out what the plans were for that land, that in fact, they hadn't actually surveyed the land to find out what was there before they were planning the development. And it was 7,600 acres of land, it was a big piece. And so it was four citizens who started the group, and then it grew to become a huge community-wide thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Council Patrick Reva.
Thanks, Chair McPherson. So Liz, thank you very much for the presentation. So a natural heritage system plan differs from a tree by law policy by maintaining corridors and identifying linkages that aren't identified, and then expanding upon that? Calls notes?
It, yes, it differs greatly from a tree by law because it's comprehensive.
Okay.
So you're looking at the entire area, you're mapping out the most important environmentally sensitive things, putting buffers around them, and then corridors. So I don't know if I can go back, but this thing is not working for me, I can't, what's going on? If I go anywhere near it, it starts to People will tell you I have this weird thing, I can't wear watches either, so I don't know. It's bizarre. Okay, so anyways, if you look at this map, this is North Oakville, and this is the 7,600 acres. Everything you see there in dark green is natural heritage system. So that's the most important areas, and their linkages, and their buffers. And that was all protected through zoning. I remember when it first started, everybody said, oh, you're gonna have to buy the land, you're gonna have to buy the land. And the town said, no, we can just zone it, because they're asking for zoning changes. It was going from agricultural to residential, commercial. And the town did, and like I said, it's an OMB case, I have the decision if you want to read it. In fact, they said this was the way planning should be done. Once you know where you can't develop, then you know where you can. And so everything in dark green is the natural heritage system, everything in light green is parks. So parks are not part of the natural heritage system, parks are a separate thing. The natural heritage system is simply there to protect the ecological function of the area.
Council Mickeluk.
Thank you, Chair McPherson, through you to Ms. Benyon. Somewhat alarming, like, you know, your data with regards to the tree canopy or the tree coverage within the Niagara region, and when you see that overhead Google map, it appears as though farming has caused quite a bit of that loss of tree coverage. Is it possible to work with developers, there are certain developments will require tree removal, where we can say plant more trees in rural areas and try to restore that tree number that we're hoping for?
Okay, there's lots of places where we can plant more trees, that's for sure. And one of the best places to plant them is in our urban areas. And, you know, when I drive around the streets in our community, I'm shocked at the number of houses that don't have a single tree in the front yard, just for example. Like, there's lots of opportunity within our already urbanized areas to plant native trees and help build the canopy. I would love to see hedge rows, I would love to see, you know, all that stuff that we used to have in farmlands years ago on our agricultural lands, but if you talk to the grape growers or a lot of the farmers, they'll tell you they don't want it, because they might have birds, and the birds will get into the crops. So I just was at a meeting with agricultural people a couple of weeks ago, and that's what I was hearing from them. So I would love to see that, but I think that's gonna be a tough road to hoe. So we're in a situation now where we have, you know, 13.8 or less, because that was, mapping was done several years ago, tree canopy cover, how much more can we afford to lose?
Yeah, through you, it's just, you know, I'm concerned about the environment, the trees, and the air quality as well. I appreciate trees, but I also appreciate development in a smart way where you may have to see a tree come down. And if there's a satisfactory formula that you would view three trees to one, five trees to one, you know, I don't know the number, I mean, I think we're working on that right now as we speak, but
I think the key, again, is you have to look at your, if you do natural heritage systems planning, then you're not looking at piecemeal decision-making, right? So then if you have an area that you know can be urbanized, and somehow you're gonna figure out how to compensate for some of that tree loss, fine. But right now, we're not doing that, we're looking at each property as an individual thing, and we're not looking at it in the context of the entire area. And so that creates a problem, you need to take a systems, I think, you need to take a systems approach to things.
Thank you. Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Liz, I want to make sure I'm not asking you questions outside of your area of expertise or experience. However, I believe that I've heard you speak before about the down, about the impact of erosion into the valley lands and the ultimate impact on stormwater management systems. So we have a significant investment that we've made in Conkle Creek. And would it be your, I'm going to say experience, so that I don't place more expertise where I shouldn't, but in your experience, what is that relationship between the removal of trees, the erosion, and then the ultimate impact downstream?
Absolutely no doubt that when you're removing tree cover, you're adding to the amount of rain runoff that you're going to get into the whole system. Because trees and roots and all the vegetation absorbs a lot of water and holds it in the soil and lets it slowly filter through into the creeks and streams. So whenever you take down trees, you're gonna have impacts. Now, sure, you can try and mitigate that with a lot of hard infrastructure. But hard infrastructure doesn't always work very well. I mean, we're experiencing unprecedented levels of flooding all around Niagara region. I'm part of another initiative, the Great Lakes Water Initiative, that's dealing with flooding issues. And, you know, that's a big problem. And part of the problem here in Niagara is the amount of cover we've lost, we've lost a lot of vegetated cover. And the gray infrastructure just isn't enough to manage it. So, you know, I can't speak to the hydraulics of that particular site, but it's concerning. And I know that the town has put a lot of money into Conkle Creek. And it would be a shame to see that be a loss. And also, I'm, you know, I'm still quite concerned about the NPCA, because the conservation authority has bad policies that were put in by the previous group that have not been changed yet. And so the setbacks from top of bank and those kind of things are reductions from what they used to be. So I think we still have some bad policies, but unfortunately, they're still the policies at the moment.
So, Mr. Chairman, in regard to the natural heritage systems, and I'm sorry I can't tell you verbatim what the status of it is, but this report has come to, we've had a presentation at the regional level, and there's more work that needs to be done on it. So it isn't as if there isn't anything being done, but it is quite a complex story. And so Liz, I'm gonna ask you what you know about that, just as a way of informing the council a little bit further.
So if you wanted to take a quick look at the slide that I just managed to pull up, and it's not bopping away from me. This is a plan that about 10 years ago, the conservation authority went through a whole process of natural heritage system planning. And this was the map that they came up with. And if you look at this map, you can see that the area that is in this potential development was part of the identification on this map of a potential natural heritage system. So they did go through the exercise to try and create a natural heritage system. It's my understanding that once the whole two-year process was complete, and it was a pretty thorough process, things had changed at the region by the time they were done the process. And when they took it to the region, the region said, your information is a burden to us, and then put it on a shelf. Currently, I've been talking to people at the region, and they say they're going back to a natural heritage system type planning. We'll see, we'll see what they do, because this is a lot of mapping that all would have to be updated. So I can't imagine that they're gonna be able to do it anytime soon, although they say they're taking it into consideration with their new official plan.
That was my understanding, that it was part of the official plan. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Liz, appreciate it. All right, we have Andrew Wood speaking to report PD 04-20 zoning by law amendment application by 1473944 Ontario Limited. Mr. Wood, please come forward.
My name is Andrew Wood, I live at 4069 Highland Park Drive, which is on the northeast corner of the subdivision in question. I would also like to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Russell, and Mr. Brunet, and Mr. Patrick Reva, Mayor Easton, and Mr. Mickeluk for coming up and investigating the site, and meeting with us, and taking a look at what we're actually talking about. Five reasons in which myself and our neighbors are concerned with this proposal. Some of these have already been addressed by you this evening. The first one being the review processes have been inconsistent, at which point, these have been addressed. The tree situation currently is in process, so as far as inconsistencies, all of those are still in progress. So in sake of time, we will move on. In the original presentation, in October, there was these schematic drawings, beautiful townhouse condos, and at which point, they had a blank background. Standing on the adjacent neighbor lot, this is the land space in which they are looking at putting nine townhouses. I'm not sure where they're going, I'm not sure how many trees are gonna be removed as far as that's concerned. They say they have an environmental specialist unnamed, who has said this is okay, going with loose tree guidelines, which are currently being investigated. Significant tree lot from Niagara, at which point, you're looking at 1,000 trees of any size or any kind is recommended as significant. It's very conservative, some municipalities in the province and even the continent are looking at 250 trees per acre. And at which point, looking at that there, there is significant tree cover as you're moving along. To continue to use the word scrub, considering it's all up in the air right now, I'm not quite sure that is very accurate to what we have seen up there. Again, mentioned earlier this evening, Niagara is moving towards a 30% tree coverage. Removing any trees is moving backwards, not even trying to sustain this idea. You can put townhouses and plant trees around them, you can't plant in concrete. And at which point, you're gonna have rooftops, you're gonna have driveways, you're gonna have roads in, and at which point, all the vegetative cover is gonna be taken away. Whatever they put in will not significantly replace what is there to begin with. Back to that photo, where those trees begin, the valley begins to slope down. That area here is specifically a watershed area four, which drains to Conkle Creek. As mentioned previously, the amount of renovations and money put into Conkle Creek has been quite significant. And we, as human beings, consider ourselves to be intelligent, we keep trying to control nature. It doesn't seem to work out so well. So you can tell me everything you want about erosion control and drains, and nothing's gonna leave the property. As you know, water has a mind of its own. This is not 100% foolproof, which means the watershed velocity and volume, once trees are removed, are going to increase into this erosional valley. As far as the size of the condo footprint, this is a view from the intersection that is proposed. There is currently topsoil piled here from development of going on south of the subdivision. Those condos are to be proposed to be built in this region here, above where this dirt lot is. It is somewhere in the vicinity of nine to 11 feet above the actual road to begin with. You're looking at anywhere between an eight to a 10% slope of land towards the main road. And then on top of which, I'm going to assume that there probably gonna be two-story condos. So where you can see where these treetops are, you're actually gonna have buildings overlooking down onto the street. That will take away any idea of what this residential neighborhood was additionally designed for. And at which point, this doesn't make any sense. Doesn't make any sense, you're putting the largest footprint, although minimally reduced, from 10 to nine condos on the most environmentally sensitive area that is there. The idea of, once you have actually put condos into this area here, that emergency vehicles and waste management vehicles are going to be turning around accurately. And at which point, that does not even take into consideration, if there is an accumulation of snow, where is this snow going, how are the vehicles gonna be turned around? Snow should not be plowed into the intersection, which I'll bring up in a minute. And at which point, you're gonna have to have space for that. Standing on top of the property and down, this is approximately at six feet above that idea. And staring down, previous presentation talked about beautiful views. The only views you have at this point are staring into neighborhood residents. And again, you're looking at privacy issues that are there. You can see, no matter what the setback is, here is the neighboring house on the left-hand side. Whether it's one meter is originally proposed, setback has increased. It is still very, very close to have buildings that are gonna be two stories, 10 feet above the ground, towering over these houses.
Mr. Wood, just from a time standpoint, one minute, please, thank you.
Previously, I had submitted a video about runoff. Runoff, this intersection is constantly wet, just as Stoddlebauer and Kayla Road is. Safety of the intersection. Last week, I was out, took a picture of one of your city trucks. This city truck is parked over on the right-hand side, as the workers are off doing some surveying. The proposed intersection is behind this truck. And at which point, you can see this intersection is wet. The slope of this intersection and the speed of vehicles are gonna make it unsafe. You now have a four-way hidden stop. We do not have any four-way hidden stops in this subdivision with driveways that are around. Stoddlebauer and Highland has a four-way stop, there is one driveway associated with that. As far as city planning is concerned, road angles aren't gonna meet up, which makes it dangerous. Number of driveways involved make it dangerous. Sightlines restricted due to extra parked cars that'll be there, not including the snow. And the speed of the hill are all going to contribute to an intersection that is unsafe for kids to play in. We are looking at environment versus economics. We have witnessed fires in Australia, we've witnessed a violent snowstorm in Newfoundland, and we have people telling us that they can predict and put certain barriers in here to restrict climate controls. That's not possible. Nobody can predict what climate's gonna do. No one can prepare this area for any type of violent weather that may be coming. And at which point, we tell our kids, you know what, you need to think locally, or, sorry, think globally and act locally. And at which point, if we start taking our local issue seriously, then maybe some of these other things and other goals we're striving to, like 30% tree cover, will exist. Thank you.
Thank you, and hang on just a sec, any questions from council? Council Brunet.
Thank you, Chair McPherson, through you to Mr. Wood. So Andrew, thank you very much for coming, you know, you've been fairly diligent through this whole process. And I respect and appreciate all your comments. There was one that you made reference to on two occasions, when you talked about two-story condos. So I just, I just wanna, through you, Mr. Chair, if we could go to planning staff, because it's my understanding, unless something's changed, that what we're talking about here are ranch-style bungalows, one story, not two. So I just wanna, through you, Mr. Chair, just for that point.
Mr. Bruder?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct, that is what was being proposed.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Wood.
Okay, thank you. We now have Lorraine Rob We now have Lorraine Roberts from Lozani Homes speaking to report PD 04-20 zoning bylaw amendment application by 1473944, Ontario Limited. Ms. Roberts, the floor is yours, and you have five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will do my best to stick to that five minutes. This is our first opportunity to speak on this application. As mentioned, my name is Lorraine Roberts. I'm the manager of land development with Lozani Homes. And I'm here this evening to present our concerns related to the applications that are before you on vineyard reserves. In the slide, you can see seven concerns that we have, which I'm going to go through individually through the presentation. The first has to do with the conformity of existing zone development. The applicant is proposing condominium townhouse development, shown in red on the slide. During the design of Lozani's Vista Ridge, the town advised Lozani that townhomes, condominium blocks, and smaller singles would not be supported on Highland Park Drive near Kaila Street, as this did not conform with the existing neighborhood lot fabric and character. Highland Park Drive is predominantly 40 to 50-foot wide single lots, which we typically refer to as estate homes. And the town has before them an application that contradicts years of planning, design, and communication. This slide, we tend to view our development in colors. And you can see on the attached slide, the differential between the medium-density areas that have been planned and built in this area, surrounded by parks, churches, schools, and that's typically where you see that form of development. And then transitioning out towards your lower form of density and your wider type of lot. There has been no consideration in these applications to the lower density on the fringes of development. Good planning involves situating townhome condominium blocks and other forms of medium and high-density development nearer to schools, parks, and along transit corridors. The impact on natural environment, I won't go into too much detail. I think Liz Benian did a good job of that. I'd just like to add to the fact that there is potential disturbance to the existing wildlife in that environment area due to the required artificial lighting that is going to come with this type of development from streetlights and from the headlights of cars entering and exiting the site. The impact of the elevation on neighboring properties, we've done a bit of a cross-section based on what we've interpreted from the proposed development of single-story townhomes. And you can see the Lozani lots. There is an approximate seven-foot difference in elevation from Lozani's site to the proposed development. And you can see that it would block the view to the escarpments. Vehicular movement through the site, along the road network, entering and exiting parking spaces and private driveways, the yellow triangles that you can see there represent headlights and how they infract the light beyond their destination. And you can see that it would cause a nuisance to adjoining residents and the future residents in the Vista Ridge development. Additionally, we looked at the type of development that was being proposed with respect to the total number of vehicles that could potentially end up on this property with respect to double-car garages, double driveways, and the number of visitor parking spaces. And we estimate that the vehicle potential is 35. 35 vehicles would all be utilizing a single access onto Highland Park Drive at the intersection of Kaila Street, creating a nuisance to abutting lots and those adjacent. One of the big concerns that we have has to do with one of the subdivision conditions that were imposed upon us by this council and recommended by staff. Within the Lozani Homes subdivision agreement is condition number seven, which states that lots 1 to 10, which are illustrated here, are to be developed with the adjacent lands to the north and west, or other alternative to the satisfaction of the town. Consideration of any application for the vineyard reserves block takes away from Lozani's ability to participate and fulfill the condition of town staff. And this council has opposed upon Lozani during the approvals process.
From a time standpoint, one minute?
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've come to learn that three pieces of notification were circulated to the public during this process on September 11th, September 16th, and November 20th. The Planning Act requires circulation of notices within 120 meters of the subject property. Lozani Homes has not received a single notice that was sent out. The Vista Ridge subdivision provides homes for approximately 500 Town of Lincoln families. And based on the town's person-per-unit guidelines, that represents 1,500 new residents that are unaware of this application, because Lozani Homes did not receive the official correspondence related to the application. More importantly, there was a public notice sign that was required to be posted on this site, and that did not occur, which is in direct contravention of the Planning Act. In summary, we're of the opinion that these applications do not make for good planning. And we have requested that the whole matter should be referred back to the beginning of the notice of public open house and public meetings, so that the Planning Act can be properly executed. These applications don't conform with good development. We are very surprised to hear about these applications this late in the process, and we're absolutely disappointed in the lack of communication to inform us about this proposed development. Not a single notice was received. And the continued conversations that we have with town staff related to our developments, not once was this ever brought up and brought to our attention. And finally, the residents, existing homeowners and purchasers, who are future homeowners, have a right to be aware and participate in this process.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
So we are now considering item 6.6. Oh, I should, is there any other speakers tonight? Seeing none, okay. We are now considering item 6.6, PD 04-20 zoning bylaw amendment application by 1473944, Ontario Limited. And as I mentioned, coming out of our closed session, we have an amended motion before And the motion is that committee defer PD-04-20 zoning bylaw amendment application by 1473944, Ontario Limited, for the purpose of further public meeting on notice. And that committee receive deputations from the public and allow further deputations to be received from the public at a further public meeting on notice. I will require a mover. Counselor Timmers, all in favor? Hands up. Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Madam Chair?
Thank you very much. Before people leave here this evening, I want to, I'd like to make a comment about this process that you've just observed. It's a little bit different. I think that's fair to say, but these are different times that we are dealing with. Earlier this evening, the council had a long chat in camera pertaining to a number of matters. I want to make it very clear that the matters that we were discussing were specific to receiving legal advice. Again, tonight, we've heard concerns raised by the adjacent neighbors. And also, I'm pleased that Liz Benian has come forward with her area of expertise to share with us. She was one of the people that we called to get more information, this is the counselors, not the staff, to get more information on the issue of trees. The number of units is a concern. It continues to be a concern. The green space and wooded areas are also a concern. And we also heard new information tonight, as it pertains to the input from another interested party, that being Mr. Lozani. And I think his representatives spoke very well. But I must say that that report could have been written by one of the neighbors, because it really very much sounded like a lot of the concerns that we've heard. I'm pleased that the report, Mr. Chairman, is being tabled, so that negotiations can be had with both parties. And I certainly expect that they're going to come to the table and talk to our CAO and result. This is extremely important. So my goal with that is twofold. I would very much want to see a reduction. I understand that everybody is saying, "No, it can't be possible." But I'm putting it on the table. I think we want to see a reduction. I know we want to see a reduction in the amount of units. And otherwise, the new information that's come forward has to be addressed, because there are issues around the integrity of the way the town conducts business. And those areas will be dealt with. I want both sides to sit down and figure this out. We're not going to be finding ourselves as a town in the midst of a turf war or any kind of battle between individuals. And so, we've given our CAO direction. We expect him to be leading this facilitation, which is absolutely essential for all parties and the integrity of this project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We are now considering item 6.7, PD 05-20 draft site alteration by law. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Mikulak?
Thank you, Chair McPherson. Just a question with regards to the fill, the placement of fill, what people can do with fill with regards to their yards. It's section 3.2. So, moving forward, and I'm going to use a hypothetical situation. Let's say you have a neighbor that has increased the amount of fill on their land, and now you've become the low property owner. And water is, you know, neighbor's water is being inadvertently, I'm sure, ending up on your land. And you're not able to mitigate that by increasing the height of your land to equal your neighbor's? Is that what I'm reading from this?
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think what the purpose of that part is, is to ensure that if somebody does want to make a change to their property, that it's not going to affect their neighbor, and they come in and follow the process and go through proper application and review by planning staff, to make sure that if they did feel that that was necessary on their property, that it was done so that there was no effect to either property ultimately, and that everything was followed to mitigate any future issue.
Okay. So, and if I may, just, the concern I have is that, like, in the past, neighbors have done that. Neighbors have increased or, you know, heightened the level of their grade to redirect water elsewhere off their own property. And now, what I'm seeing is that you're not able to, at least, without going through a process, complicated process, to offset that damage or that negative impact that you may be suffering from your neighbor that's done it in the past.
Mr. Smith?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That is a concern. I mean, depending on when the original work happened, there's statute of limitations as to when we can look after something that's happened years and years and years ago. I mean, we were hoping to catch this stuff while it's happening or recently after it has happened, so that we can ensure that somebody's actually coming into the, into town hall to follow proper permitting processes, so that doesn't happen in the future. And part of what this bylaw, this draft bylaw has is mechanisms in order for enforcement to go out and deal with those properties as they're, deal with those properties and problems as they're happening, so that when that does occur, we can ensure proper reviews happening. Or if something can't go through or it's not going to be approved through the permitting process, we can make sure that that property takes action to revert the property back to the original state, so that the issue doesn't compound itself into future issues.
Okay. And just one more quick one. Is there action taken by bylaw to address water concerns from neighbors? Let's say downspouts are directed towards my property, towards my home. Is there currently measures taken by bylaw to prevent that from occurring?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I mean, those are investigations that we deal with right now. There are complaints that we get right now. Part of what our review is to see where that water is starting, where it's finishing, where the actual projection of that water is taking place, if it's directed specifically onto somebody else's property, or it's directed onto their own property. And the natural drainage patterns are taking it to another location. It's all part of what we look at. We do have provisions in some of our bylaws that speak to directing it onto somebody's property specifically, where we do have enforcement or authority to have that property redirect some of that water, so it's not going to impact those neighboring properties. Further to that, too, is this year, we're hoping to do a property standards review, which some of the drainage enforcement authorities that we have will likely be reviewed even further into that bylaw, too. But to answer your question specifically, we are currently doing those investigations, and we do have mechanisms to deal with some of those issues.
And the reason why I ask that is because we're asking many residents to disconnect their downspouts or, you know, run them off instead of going into the sewer. You know, take that gray water and put it on to the surface, as opposed to in the sewers. And my fear is that we're going to have a lot of crafty water issues moving forward. So just as long as we, you know, as long as we take into account those neighbors that have potentially the lowest lot on the street. So, that's all. Thank you.
Mayor Easton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to see this bylaw. It certainly is evolving. There's no question about it. I'm looking at page 178. I was looking at the fees, and I think I did speak to Mr. Bruder about this. But in speaking with the other West Niagara mayors, there's been some considerable effort by both the Town of Grimsby and also the Township of West Lincoln with their bylaws. And one of the features that I would like a little bit more information about is, when we pass this bylaw, who are the businesses that we will be notifying within Niagara? And what efforts will we be taking, if any, to notify trucking companies that operate out of Niagara? Because we know that one of the issues here is that this has now become business. This is revenue. And trucks are coming from all over the GTA, and the GTA filled with soil. There's no weight restrictions, per se. There's issues of soiling the road. And so, I don't see us being able to be really successful with this. If we don't advertise the fact that we have it, that this is not a good place to come, so don't target Lincoln. What's our position going to be on that, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Smith?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Good question. That's, I don't have a specific answer on how we're going to be specifically reaching out to these trucking organizations. It's absolutely something we should be considering moving forward. I think the bonus here is that we're in draft form of this document, so we're able to take that information and make sure that we're applying it to what our process is going forward. But I think that's a great question.
Okay. That's great. Mr. Chairman, I'll leave that with Mr. Smith. I'm curious to know whether we've hit the ceiling on the fines. I respect the permits need to be affordable in order to encourage people to do the right thing. But what about the fines? Are we absolutely moving in the right direction on those to discourage? And who will be fined? Is it the truck driver, or is it the truck owner? Is it the truck driver or is it the truck owner?
Mr. Smith?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So as a specific to the fines, a lot of the fine totals are already, they're based off of legislation approvals through the Provincial Offense Act and maximums. We have the authority to ask for any kind of fine that we wish up to the maximum, and we always ensure that when we are laying a charge, that we inform that person being charged of what those maximum fines are. We have a secondary option under a different piece of that provincial legislation, the Provincial Offense Act, to set some early fines, so the short-form wording is the term we usually use. It's under Part 1 of the Provincial Offense Act, where it allows us to have that first line of enforcement and set some fines, and we are able to ask for any kind of fine in that sense, provided it's not over, I believe, $5,000, where we have to make a submission to the Ministry of the Solicitor General's Office in order to do so. So there is some flexibility on the first line of enforcement for us to suggest the fines that we feel are appropriate, but as it relates to the bigger fines, they're set through legislation.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, is there a point, through you, is there a point where we reach, I think you've spoken to this before, Mr. Smith, where the repeated behavior becomes a criminal act? Does that apply here?
Mr. Smith?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, that's correct. So we do have the authority in a progressive enforcement aspect, I guess, that if we do lay charges and there continue to be violations based off of any conviction that we have already achieved or received, that we would be able to seek what's called an injunction or prohibition order, which would ultimately make a use or a violation of one of our provisions into a criminal matter, and any further action would involve police.
Okay. That's hopeful. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion to direct staff to coordinate a public information center to review and provide opportunity for resident stakeholders and other interested parties to provide input and comment on the draft bylaw. We require a mover for the motion. Counselor Russell, thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? And that is carried unanimously. We've now reached the consent agenda. Item 6.8 Heritage Committee, minutes of December 12th, 2019. Would any member like to remove the item from the consent agenda to discuss? There being no one, we will require a mover for the motion to pass item 6.8 on the consent agenda. Counselor Timmers, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? And that is carried unanimously. Committee remarks at four minutes to 11:00. Do we have any committee remarks that haven't been remarked already? Thank you. Counselor Pachariva?
Chair McPherson, I will try to be quick. Given we received an Emerald Ash Bore policy a couple of years ago, and the tree policy tonight, and Ms. Benyon's presentation that, you know, 2011 numbers show a 13.8 forest cover and that you need 30% to have a functioning ecology and 50% to actually affect climate change, wondering when we might be looking, and that fact that we have an arborist on staff, when we might be receiving a comprehensive tree canopy policy for the town? This is something that I had asked about a year ago when we had that Emerald Ash Bore and saying it wasn't a tree policy, but looking for something proactive that we can see.
So do we have a staff member, Ms. McKay or Ms. Dale, that would respond to that They're deliberating.
Mr. Chairman, I think staff will have to get back to committee on that. Don't have an answer for you tonight, sorry.
Okay. So we have given staff direction on the, Mr. CAO is going to make a comment.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just briefly speak to that, I think there's absolutely a synergy between the tree policy that has been approved this evening, that is contained within the bylaw that was just approved around land, or around fill, that really does dovetail into that. As members of council will know, in reading that policy, it does apply to the urban tree canopy within the urban boundary, not on farmland. So I think there's a way to take what we've already done and try to marry that into what the counselor is suggesting, so definitely staff can get back to council in a more fulsome manner.
Thank you. Okay. There being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.